Good evening. The April 11th, 2024 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Nettie will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present. Clerk, do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So it's now time for comments from the public. Please, we're asking that you please keep, oh, thank you, please keep your comments respectful. Recognize that any person speaking or acting in a disrespectful or disruptive manner will ask to be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your city of residence. I have several people signed up to speak tonight, and the first up will be Russ Higley.
Good evening. My name is Russ Higley. I'm the director of Highline College's Mass Center Aquarium down in Redondo. Thank you for the chance to speak. Two things, just one, wanted to say thank you for a lot of the work that you're doing down in Redondo. It's noticed, I wanted, as the mass and being a public agency, I have to be careful of the political stance, but I want to, I hear from the public, and a lot of really strong things, they're excited about the changes, obviously they wish it would happen faster, that sort of stuff, but one, thank you for all of that. The more thing that I wanted to focus on tonight was, I know that the general parking in that lot will be closed during construction for the pier as a staging area, and so that obviously is going to have impact on regular use for the general public down there. And so, for example, the Mass Center, we were looking at expanding our hours this summer, and we're not going to because of the impact of less parking down there. We're not quite sure how that's going to play out this summer. And so, two, couples kind of thoughts, is there ways that we can mitigate that loss of the 20-ish spots that are there in the general purpose? Could a quarter of the boat spots during maybe not salmon season be turned over to general purpose spots? Could, Salty's isn't apparently opening, could their lot, could we, could the city approach them and say, can we use your lot until you open? And we, we, you know, it gets striped and access there. Could the, there are a block or so up, some of the parking turns into residential limited spots for the neighbors. That's only been in place since about COVID happened. Could that go back to general purpose for the duration of this? Obviously, the residents of Redondo, you know, that's, I'm not meaning to impinge in their area, and I realize that the local, the visitors that come down there have that potential. And so, one of the things we always are, at the mass, we play with the idea of what we call near miss injury, like something that could have happened, sort of thing. Taking away parking in an area where a lot of people are trying to find parking seems that it's going to be asking for frustration. And frustration leads to things we don't want down there. So, that's my thought story. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Next, we have David Emery.
Hello, council, interim city manager. Again, my name is David Emery. I'm an eight-plus-year resident of the Des Moines-Redondo Beach neighborhood. I'm addressing you this evening to bring to your attention something I observed in the Redondo Beach neighborhood on the evening of Thursday, March 28. As you may or not, may not be aware, the Redondo Beach neighborhood has been under attack by members of a new street racing gang the past few months. This is the gang that's been primarily responsible for much of the evening and nighttime exhibition driving, reckless driving, deafening street noise, burnout marks inside and near the Redondo Boat Launch Parking Lot, and general mayhem in our neighborhood again over the past couple of months. This gang was out in force on the evening of March 28 with about eight different vehicles. I personally called 911 for the 18th time, and a few minutes later witnessed a lighted patrol vehicle actually catch and detain initially four and eventually five of these vehicles. I saw that the patrol eventually, patrol vehicle pinned one of the street racers against the log borders in Wooton Park, and eventually call out about 10 individuals from the trap vehicle and the other four vehicles to stand on the sidewalk next to the parking lot. I also noted a police officer searching the interior of the trap car and one or two of the other four vehicles exited by the other members of this street racing gang. I figured this was exactly the scenario that the Des Moines City Council had in mind when they passed the Street Racing Ordinance Number 1747 in July of 2021, and watched patiently to see all of these hooligans receive the citations for their participation in this exhibition, a street racing event. Alas, it appears that the only citation written was to the driver of the one-pinned race car, and all 10 or so of the other members of the street racing gang were allowed to leave the scene with zero repercussions. I'm asking the members of the city council and the interim city manager to ask themselves this: How can the city maintain trust with the taxpaying citizens and expect the citizens to vote for substantial increases in police funding when the police finally catch half of the street racing gang plaguing a Des Moines neighborhood only to ignore the ordinance passed by the city council that fits exactly the situation at hand? Instead, essentially, the whole group walks away with zero repercussions. I, for one, expect a whole lot more of integrity from my city. Thanks for the consideration of my comments.
Thank you, David. Next, Jim DeRosa.
I brought a copy of the bench here with what I was going to say. Hello, council, sorry, I'm going to read this for a second. Hello, council, city leaders and other fellow citizens of Des Moines. My name is Jim DeRosa. Yes, I live in Des Moines. Yes, I'm on the board of the Redondo Community Association. However, I'm coming to you as a citizen. I'm here tonight to bring up a concern with our existing 2024 budget. Before I go into things, I've got a couple of things on my background there with a few decades of experience putting together budgets. I was also a lead analyst, all for a large airplane manufacturer here in the Puget Sound. I was also the chairman of the board for a little credit union. Anyhow, when I heard about the proposal for increasing property taxes because of the shortfall in the current and future city budgets, I used the methods I developed in the corporate nonprofit world of identifying what things in the budget are concerning, and here's just one, and I have others. I know you've heard numerous complaints about, about a consistent group of drivers not behaving throughout our city, and I'm personally aware of the issues in the Marina and Redondo communities. And as you know, in a traditional environment, what happens to drivers that do not follow the laws in place? The police department issues a ticket. As you know, these tickets serve as a lesson and consequence for not driving responsibly. As a bonus, the municipality collects the revenue from these tickets to help offset expenses. From what I noticed in this 2024 city budget, for some reason, our police department on purpose does not appear to be issuing tickets on a consistent basis. When you think about it, a fair amount of work goes into issuing a ticket, is already done once a vehicle is stopped and reviewing the vehicle and driver's information. What I did is, I'm here, I came up with, out of the total income I found on the budget on pages 55 and 56 was $1,961,000. Out of that, there's the red light camera, the schools own the Redondo cameras, the mortgage late fees, and I came up with around $111,000 for fines and penalties that look like AKA tickets to me. And so, when I took that and I divided it down, divided it down, and ultimately, it came out to, with my math anyhow, around $138 per police shift of tickets, issuing tickets in the city budget. And so, as you know, in the police department, you know, there's usually minimum of four officers, I believe, on duty, and one of them being a sergeant. Anyway, I'm not asking for any answers, nor am I asking for a quota system. I just ask that our city leaders, in conjunction with the police department, work to review these. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Barton DeLacy. Did you sign in because you were, you thought you needed to sign in to attend?
I did.
Okay, no worries. Glad to have you here. Thank you. Next, Karen Sharpe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and staff. Karen Sharpe, and I live on Soundview Drive South. I'm with the Redondo Community Association. Tonight, I'm here to address the proposed residential property tax increase from .89 to 1.4 per thousand assessed value. Before I do that, though, I want to say thank you to the city for really amazing response today to remove graffiti that was unfortunately placed on the boardwalk, our park gem in Redondo, and that was very fast, and everybody that I talked to as I was walking today really appreciated that. Thank you. This may push me a little over, but had to be said. Back to the tax, I acknowledge the challenge that inflation has presented for our city. It's significant, and I recognize and support the need to improve investments in safety and maintain safety. As we navigate this dynamic, however, it's crucial to view the changes through a lens of financial feasibility. Without this focus, well-intended actions may have unintended consequences. One vital perspective is to ensure that our city's tax position remains equitable relative to the jurisdictions that surround us. Balancing the need for safety with minimizing the total tax burden is a really important focus. Failure to do this could stifle economic growth, drive out residents, and disadvantage lower-income houses. Currently, the proposed tax increase would position Des Moines inequitably to our surrounding geographies. Today, we have the highest total tax rate among comparable jurisdictions, total tax rate at 11.63 per thousand. We exceed Federal Way by 10%, Kent by 17%, and SeaTac by 6%. We fall just 5% below Normandy Park, which has significantly higher average income. I think maintaining parity is one very important lens that we should view a tax increase. As part of a balanced plan, I urge the city to really focus on driving a balanced plan to address the challenges that we face. I'm going to mention six areas of focus that I would really draw actions around. I know that you've made efforts in these areas, so you're going to hear me and say, we've done that, we've done that, we took this one off the list, we can't do it, but these are things that you really got to double down, look through a new lens, drive continuous improvement to ensure that there's a balance. And again, financial feasibility, making sure you don't go above kind of a watermark, I think is really important. I'm going to say this fast because I'm running out of time, but benchmark your services, benchmark what they cost and what you're getting. Critical to know that you have the right level of efficiency. Review all your programs systematically, identify redundancies, make difficult decisions to reallocate, explore grants, user fees, public-private partnerships, collaborate with private entities to deliver services more efficiently. And finally, I'd really look at, how do you do an increase that's more graduated over time versus a 57% in one year? And then you can monitor it, and you can adjust and make sure that things stay in balance. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Karen. Next up, Barbara McMichael.
Good evening, Mayor Buxton, city council staff, friends and neighbors. I asked some of my neighbors and friends tonight in honor of Earth Day and Arbor Day to wear green, and I'm going to be speaking about the defenders of Highline Forest a little bit, but would you guys who were kind enough to come down tonight just wave friend lily? See, we're all, we're all here in favor of trees tonight, so that's why I'm here. So I'm Barbara McMichael. I live in Des Moines, and I'm introducing the defenders of Highline Forest tonight. I've talked with some of you about that before. For thousands of years, this very spot was part of a contiguous forest, and it's only been a few generations, relatively speaking, that that has changed. According to the Urban Tree Canopy Assessment that Forterra developed for Des Moines back in 2017, the tree canopy standard for urban areas in this region should be 40 to 60%. And in 2017, they measured our tree canopy, and it was 29%. Seven years ago, so that was seven years ago, and if you take a look since then, our tree, there's been more development pressure. So I just wanted to say that development pressures have accelerated tree canopy losses since then. In the face of climate change, and with data showing that communities around SeaTac Airport are especially hard hit by environmental health impacts, trees are a natural and obvious antidote to these problems. There are proven policies and opportunities to invest in programs that can help our community reduce tree destruction and grow more trees. So our neighbors, Burien, Tuck Willa, and Normandy Park have urban foresters and plans for growing their tree canopy. SeaTac's about to hire an urban forester. And yet, I don't think Des Moines is yet, I was happy to hear that, yay, you're, Tyler, you're going to be talking with the arborist, but I'd really like to see more interest and more effort in preserving tree, existing tree canopy in our city, and more investment in tree canopy expansion. And, you know, I brought it again, but of all of the priorities in the comp plan, the top one by citizens mentioned was preserving natural space. And yet, when we're talking about the levee lid lift, it's all going to public safety. I think if we pay more attention to trees, instead of being entirely reactive to the problems of the city, we can be proactive in bringing in an urban forester and some teen foresters, and really working on improving our tree canopy. So, to learn more about defenders of Highline Forest, this is the sort of thing we advocate for, visit our website at www defendersofhighlineforest.org. If you sign the forest consensus that you will find there, you'll receive our monthly newsletter, and for the health of our community, it's important to connect all of our efforts to preserve and restore Highline Forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next up, we have Bill Lynn Scott.
Thank you. I'm Bill Lynn Scott. I live in Des Moines, and I wanted to talk a little bit tonight, have some comments on the Marina Comprehensive Plan that's up for approval. Just to clarify, I want to talk finance, a couple of finance things here. This is different than the general fund, okay? That's an enterprise fund, so it's managed separately. I don't want anybody to be confused. But anyway, we certainly need that plan that manages the most expensive project in probably the history of the city. If you look at the plan, overruns 30 to 40 years and $90-plus million. So the first draft of the plan was about August 21st, or 2021, and this plan is greatly improved from that. In fact, I think it covers much of the tenant's interest, and it's recognized that that thing will change and be amended over time, and so I think they feel pretty comfortable or would feel comfortable with that. The council, however, and the residents, I think you'll find some things that need some updates. Some of them are simple, like the rendering and the narrative around the Marina steps is kind of outdated. It ought to be updated to the configuration and what we have now. A harder example is Chapter 6 and the finance. It needs more info. We ought to have a forecast of operational expense and revenue across the entire year, almost a life cycle view. We ought to evaluate the current and new revenue streams and make sure we understand those that might come in over that time. We should forecast the debt and servicing of that debt across the life cycle, and I would think we ought to have a five-year plan, similar to the five-year plan we have with the general fund. So the near-term stuff is more completely understood. When I look at how that, this project progresses, the plan can only move as fast as the Marina Enterprise Fund can actually service the debt. And until we understand the details of that, you know, it's kind of hard to tell whether, how achievable the plan is. Also noted in the plan, they're going to accelerate the adaptive perps building, which is the boat stacks. I think that's a necessary feature. It does bring revenue, and doing it earlier sounds good, like revenue comes earlier, but until I see the rest of the data, I'm not sure what that means to servicing the debt and whether that's a good thing or not. Earlier, they had planned to have that occur when the small boats came off the water, about 10 years out. Now it's earlier, and there's a big gap between the small boats coming off the water, and what, at that time, I'm not sure what we'll be able to offer them as a place to house their boats here in the, in Des Moines. The other thing that I would suggest is, if you haven't seen the operation, you might take a field trip. You did that with Harbor Steps, you might do it with this one, too. There's a lot to learn, there are implications that are relevant and need to be worked, and they can be worked, but you got to get to it earlier. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Next up, Steve Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor Buxton, members of city council. My name is Steve Quinn. I live in Des Moines. I'm here to talk about the March study session, the communications presentation. I do apologize for missing the recent study session, I had family obligations on the East Coast. My biggest concern is the lack of urgency stemming from the March presentation, as I see it. A few observations. First, the focus groups. Each met when most people were either at work or home with kids, something noted on social media when the consultants sought focus group volunteers. So the consultant severely limited the pool of prospective volunteers. The business focus group featured 12 of 15 people from a local union. Now, I'm a union supporter, but that was not a business focus group, that was a workforce focus group. I believe there might have been one downtown business represented there. The resident focus group, as noted, had 11 people, not seven per the report, I believe that was fixed, but the presentation failed, completely failed to capture the candor of a group that spoke with intense urgency for meaningful change, all while providing clear examples reflecting the problem. The urgency was not conveyed in the slightest. Second, recommendations. Calling for simple tweaks to a webpage doesn't begin to address the problem, not even close. This page needs a complete overhaul, and it has for a few years. You know, the city manager, I believe, said, "Des Moines has a good story to tell." I don't doubt him for a second, but this kind of storytelling starts with an engaging webpage, and there are plenty of good examples out there. Back to the focus group for a second. One person noted how some of the writing on the webpage would not pass 10th grade English, so I had a look, had to agree. Since the March study session, I've seen posts that would still make it hard to get a passing grade. So the consultant did a good job of restating resident concerns, stenography, if you will, but there are ongoing communication gaps that should have been identified and were not covered. Most are deeply rooted in the webpage. So please don't misunderstand me, this is a daunting task. It's extremely difficult to carry out, as was noted, under your current structure and budget. The city manager absolutely nailed it last week when he said, "It's going to take a cultural shift." It takes time, a willingness to change, and patience. So the last thing I need to do is thank Mayor Buxton for reaching out for us to have coffee with the deputy mayor next week. I look forward to it. And I also have to thank council member Mahoney. Every, since introducing himself to me when I moved here almost two years ago, every time that I've reached out to him for clarity on something going on with the city, clarity without jargon, clarity with everyday English, he's come through and provided me a better understanding of how the city works each time we've communicated. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. That's all we have for those who have signed up on our sheet for this evening. However, are there any of you who came to the meeting tonight expecting to, or desiring to make public comment, but you didn't know you needed to sign up, or you, the sheet was no longer there? So I do notice Patrice raised her hand, so Patrice, come on up if you want, and then, and then I'll take anybody else who, okay, Rick, who has wanted to give public comment tonight.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Buxton, Des Moines City Council members, staff, and citizens. Nice to see you here tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge one of my fellow Des Moines Legacy Foundation Board members, Kayleen Moon, who's here tonight, and we have a couple of council members that are also on the Legacy Board, so you get to hear it whether you want to or not, I guess. So here, I'm here tonight to announce a significant milestone for the Des Moines Legacy Foundation. It's our 25th anniversary. As you know, we are a 501(c)(3) charity, and we are here because of the strength and support of the Des Moines community, its citizens, and the significant contributions that they have all made with us for the betterment of Des Moines. This year, we are launching an exciting initiative. It's called Legacy at 25, and we are awarding $25,000 in mini-grants to individuals and organizations serving the Des Moines community. And the grant applications and criteria are available online now at www desmoinelegacy.org. So I'm hoping that folks in the audience see this and look up the mini-grant process and apply. We'd love to see you. In the past, the Des Moines Foundation has distributed over a million and a half dollars to programs and projects that were made possible because of the generosity of the Des Moines community and its support and vision of the Legacy's foundation between 1999 and 2024. So this is our 25-year span, and we're not stopping here. We're moving ahead. And we have had the partnerships with, of course, the city of Des Moines, and our citizens, service clubs, educators, businesses, and other governments that have worked with us to build community, where, to make Des Moines a place where people want to live, work, and play, hopefully lots of play. I just want to list a few of our top 25 contributions to the community, and those all came with the support of the community. It's not legacy by itself, it's our businesses, our people, their donations, their generosity that made all this happen in Des Moines. Anthony's Homeport has been a sponsor and partner with us for 25 years. We were together with the Police Foundation and Rotary helped to build Stephen J. Underwood Memorial Park, its first plaza that opened up the park way back in 2002. Fireworks over Des Moines. The Des Moines Senior Activities Center, we built quite a large piece of that facility, its kitchen, entrance, patio, garden, and the outdoor reader board. Senior services support, including the senior van that is there now, and $300,000 worth of contributions to local human services that are senior-oriented. Des Moines Parks and Recreation Youth Scholarships. Okay, so, do I get more time because I'm with a foundation? Anyway, there's lots of stuff that we've done in the past, and I want to make sure that you all know about our upcoming fundraiser. I'd like to invite everybody to attend. Our Second Annual Bayside Ball is going to happen at the Des Moines Yacht Club on June 8. eighth. A number of you were there last year. It's a lot of fun. We're featuring Sinatra and his friends, Joey Jewell and the orchestra, his orchestra. And it's just going to be a great evening to support our community. Last year, we raised close to $30,000. Money went to free-use swimming lessons, to the children's, the Waterland Children's Festival. It went to the arts. We do have put, have actually purchased and donated to the city most of the public art that you see here in the community. And also, we gave a lot, quite a significant money to the, our paddle raise gave quite a significant amount of money to our Des Moines Food Bank. So, these are all really worthy causes. We want to invite you and engage you to be partners with us, and really appreciate the support we've had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. Rick, you had raised your hand. Would you like to give public comment?
I live at Redondo Beach. Thank you for the citizens that showed up tonight on your time to come to this meeting. For the council, the staff, thank you. I've got a couple problems I've got to bring up. And I know the speed cameras are getting close to being up, but we're going to have a problem from 287th North all the way on Reach Drive, because there's no cameras there. So, there'll be, when they figure this out, they're going to be racing up and down from Redondo Beach Drive at 280th all the way to 287th. And another thing, I walked the boardwalk today. I didn't see any graffiti, but I did see some droppings that people had the pets. I went on Facebook. I've asked people, the city supplies bags, they supply the garbage cans, and they're pretty good about it. But people, if you don't have, if you have a dog and you're not going to pick up after him, don't come down there. Don't come down there at all. We don't want you. There's trails where someone stepped in it, and then it went and made a trail. So, and that was today. There's probably five places that I saw on only half the beach boardwalk. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Is there anybody else that expected to give public comment tonight and did not realize they needed to sign up or they were too late? Okay, good. It looks like we're done for that, then, right now. Thank you so much, and I agree with Mr. Johnson. Thank you so much for coming tonight, all of you. This is, quite a few of you came tonight, and greatly appreciated by us. So, moving on now to committee chair reports. We have a couple of people, a couple of our council members up here, chairs of committee, and we're looking out, looking for their reports. I'll begin with the Finance Committee with Chair Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee didn't meet last week because we had a study session. We met the week before. We had our finance director discuss forecasts, with the ability to forecast in the future. They're working on that in finance. He talked about he's making progress, but it continues to evolve. We talked about the CIP process. There's going to be a new integrated CIP process within our financial system, so it could be looked. It'll have the numbers. It'll have the information. It'll be accessible by the public. It looks like it's going to be a great transparent addition to, into that portion of our business. We talked about the bond proceed investment. Sometimes when you invest bonds, when you draw bonds, you can't necessarily invest them, because there's a way the government could actually make money in doing interest. In this particular case, it was reviewed, and the remaining monies can be put in investments for the window of time until they're used. So, there's a way for our money just not sitting in a checkbook, but making a little money while we go through the process of some of the development. There was a long-term financial plan discussion, and our finance director and city manager are committed to providing longer-range numbers for us to see, not only in the next few years, but years to come, and where we'll sit, whether we sit in the red on a reserve or in the black or so forth. And the ultimate goal is to keep it in the black. Talked about replacement vehicle assessment. Also, they're managing and monitoring the timeframes that these vehicles exist, the maintenance to them and replacement cost. So, there's a better schedule, and there's ways that you can get a vehicle, you can get for, some of the police vehicles are operated off engine hours, not miles. So, because if you've noticed, if you've ever seen one, they're running a lot of the time. So, their life cycle is a little shorter than, say, a vehicle we would use for, like, a permit, permitting officer or something like that, where they're not going to be running them all the time and so forth. So, there's ways to schedule maintenance, manage depreciation, et cetera. We reviewed the animal control issues since we've gone to Burien Cares and a contractor. And what it confirmed is, you know, people have opinions about the service, but it has definitely matched what we needed to do, and it's done it cheaper than if we had somebody ourselves. And then, we reviewed the monthly general fund. The big thing that came out of that is the sales and use tax is down a little bit in the first couple of months. We're going to review it again in June when we see a definite trend. But it is one of those challenges that we continue to see. Sales and use tax is one of our third legs. In fact, it's one of our primary legs of funding, and it continues to struggle and not keep up. For some information for folks, if you look at other towns, and there were some comparisons to them, Federal Way, for example, or Sea Tech or whatever, they have hotels or stores or car dealerships and those kinds of things, and there's a lot of revenue that gets generated from those in sales and use tax. Our city doesn't have those. So, it makes it a little bit more challenging for us to raise money and so forth to keep things, you know, keep things afloat. And it is some in common reason that some of those cities might not pay as much in property taxes, because they're able to fund it through sales and use tax. Anyway, that was pretty much the consensus of the report. We had a brief discussion on levy, but I'm going to leave that to the discussion tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have, we had the Environment Committee met today, and Chair Harris has a report about that.
Thank you. It was definitely a packed agenda, and I want to thank my colleagues, because I joke that the Environment Committee has the lowest fun factor. It is thousands of pages of extremely dense material, and it covers a tremendous amount of stuff. And we are blessed to have five special-purpose districts, anything to do with the shoreline. The regulatory constraints are astounding to me, considering the size of the city. So, people should just understand, there's, we have an amazing amount of compliance in that is part of the natural beauty that we all enjoy. We had a, we reviewed the environment portion of the comprehensive plan update concerning conservation. We talked about the relationship with the special-purpose districts, how we might be able to get a better heads-up about all of the different interactions, so that we can, don't have as many surprises. I was pleased to see the discussion about trees. I don't know precisely where that goes at this point, but it's really good to have that. Also, there is an integration regarding the airport, the Start Community Roundtable, and that also is a pleasant improvement. We really have to start thinking about the airport as one of the strategic interests of our environmental planning. There was also a CIP, a capital improvement project update, and that right there, you could talk about a bit, but I'll just keep it short and talk about, we are looking at an update with Southwest Suburban Sewer, and there are a number of homes in the North Hill area that are still on septic. They are getting to end of life, and I was pleased to see that our staff is looking at ways that we can encourage people to move off of septic. King County is trying to provide rebates and programs to help with that, and that's also adds to the fun of all the various environmental challenges we have. And I, let's see here. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, last week, we also had the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee meet, and I'm the chair of that, so I'll give a short report out about a couple of the items that we talked about. The Police Department has been accredited for fourteen years, and we're in year two of the current accreditation track. So, accreditation in the state of Washington is about, all about best practices. And there are, it's pretty tedious, though. There are 132 standards to meet or exceed, and we're on track this, right now, and only 24% of the agencies in Washington are accredited, and we are one of those. So, I'm really proud of our department. Coming up, Public Service Recognition Week is May 5 through 11. So, if you get an opportunity to appreciate a public servant during that week, I'm sure that would be greatly appreciated. We also received a report out on our hazard mitigation plan from our emergency manager, Director Shannon Kirchberg. And, you know, it sounds like a lot of words, but really, it's a plan about how to respond and mitigate after kind of a natural disaster. We're not going to have hurricanes or tornadoes here, but we could have floods. We're in a bowl here. We could have king tide situations or high-wind situations, so, or a volcano or an earthquake, right? So, it's good to be prepared. Let's see. We also received an update in regard to our dangerous dog code. Had a few events in the last handful of months, and we just wanted to review and make sure that we were doing our best to keep citizens and animals safe, but also following, following best practices there, making sure everybody stays protected as we move forward legally in how we respond to our dangerous animals in our community. So, that's about it for last week's Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. So, next up, we have the city manager's report, and I'm going to hand that to City Manager Tim George.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick updates. So, I have some good news. Tomorrow, our staff is going to do a walkthrough at the Senior Activity Center to make sure that the repairs are complete and that it's ready to go. And then, we are going to do some deep cleaning next week and some organizing and making sure it's ready for everybody. We're hoping to have it open the Monday after that. So, that would be April 22nd. So, I can provide an update next week on the status, but we're thinking that April 22nd is going to be the date. So, and as soon as we know that for sure, we'll start advertising.
Fantastic.
So, and just so the public was aware, that we had to close that facility due to a pipe burst during the winter freeze that resulted in a lot of water damage. So, it's been closed for several months. Next up, we have a legislative update, and I would like to call our legislative advocate, Anthony Himsted, up to provide us an update on everything he had been working on this year.
Thank you, Tim. Counselors, Des Moines citizens, good to see everyone. Hard to believe that I was here in January. It seems like a long time ago, but so much has happened. In between that time, when we were kind of giving a preview of what was likely to happen in the session, and then what did actually happen. Very packed, sixty-day session, and, but also recognizing that you have a very packed meeting, I'll try to go over on a high-level basis. If you want to drill down into any specific issues, happy to go into more detail on all of that. But that being said, there are over 1,200 bills that were introduced, and I would like to think I'm an expert on all of them. I'm not. But on those for Des Moines, we can talk. Okay. So, and then we'll also look ahead at what's coming up later this year. So, the session, sixty-day session, unusual session in a variety of ways. It's the last year of twelve years of Janesley, and things kind of change sometimes when, or do change when it's a lame-duck governor. There were several major initiatives that were being pushed that did not, did not actually pass. And some of those include transfer-oriented development, and most cities had some issues with that, and so, in some ways, it's fine that that didn't pass. But there are also initiatives on funding for public safety that we did want to see pass, just to allow for more, more ways that local governments could get funding for that, and those unfortunately died. And a variety of other big-picture ideas also didn't, didn't pass. There was an unusual amount of activity regarding the budget. Because of the Climate Commitment Act, that pumped another about two and a half billion dollars into the budget that hadn't been there before. Also, 700 million from the capital gains tax program. But those might be one-time revenues. We will, we will see in November if those continue or not. And that brings us to one of the other things that really made this unusual year was kind of hanging over the entire session were these, these six initiatives to the legislature, a couple of which will have, potentially have massive or very considerable impact on future budgets if they pass. So, and three of those ended up being adopted, two of which were relatively uncontroversial, the Parents' Bill of Rights and prohibiting an income tax. But then, one that was controversial is rolling back the variety of restraints that have been put on police pursuits, and that was actually, one of our priorities is to work on that. We had heard earlier from legislators that it was very unlikely to come up, but because of the initiative, it kind of forced, it did force the hand of the legislature, and they adopted that. So, that will not be on the ballot that has been passed, and it will allow more flexibility for our police department and others in the state to do pursuits if that is deemed necessary. But there are three initiatives that are going to the ballot. The repeal of the Climate Commitment Act, also the repeal of the capital gains tax program, and making much more flexible the long-term, long-term care tax, which was just implemented in the last year for all, all employees in Washington State. And it has, has become quite controversial, and that, that would no longer become, would no longer be mandatory. It would be, you could opt in if you wanted. So, all three of those will be on this, this November's ballot. So, on to our agenda at the City of Des Moines. We did go down and have several things that we were pursuing that the council, council approved. We had two items that we were looking for in the capital budget. One was more funding for, towards the Marina Steps program, and also funding towards Marina electrification that could help with future electric ferry, and also as more boats at the Marina move towards electrical power. And we- And we, we did end up getting $100,000 towards the Marina electrification. We, we were looking for, for more than that, but it, it was very helpful to get the $100,000. That will be a usable amount, and, and should, should help very significantly because we can combine that, in that we've also been working on a variety of grants. Grants, different process than, than earmarks here. But Des Moines has been successful in getting about $750,000 in a grant for auto electrification at the Marina. And we're, we're going to move that, we're in, in, in working with, with Public Works and the Marina, will, will try to combine these as much as possible because much of it is, is very, very similar. And, and so we'll be using that as kind of a, a force multiplier in, in making, in being able to get the, as much done on the Marina electrification as possible. So on policy issues, we were looking for more flexibility from the state on being able to find public safety dollars. Clearly, that's a, that's a major issue for, for Des Moines, as it is for, for many communities. There were some, some very interesting bills. Mayor Buxton did a great job in coming down and testifying in favor of those bills, and, and they, they did make considerable progress. But again, 60, 60-day sessions are, it's really short. And these deadlines come up, and, and there, there are so many competing interests, and, and the lack of time is, is a huge problem, and, and that's what kills most bills. But, but none of those passed this year. Very likely, they will be coming up, again, next year. We're already hearing in the election season that both Bob Ferguson and Dave Reichert, who are likely to be, end up in the, in the top two for governor, they're, they're putting public safety as a, as a top priority. What actually comes out of that as far as, as policies and what, what might impact the city of Des Moines in the future, it's much, much too early to say. There may be nothing, there may be something, but to be continued on that. Other public safety issues, we, we were supporting additional training slots in, in police academies around the, around the state because, Des Moines, like many other communities, it has been very, very hard to recruit the number of, of officers that we would like and need. Washington State is 51st in per capita police officers in the country. When you think, well, we've only got 50 states, but you include District of Columbia. But being 51st is not something necessarily to brag on, on that. But, but a new academy was established, so, so there, there will be more slots. And then also importantly, there had been a, a 25% local, local cost of that. So, so if, if we, if Tim had put someone in the academy, we, we would have had to come up with, with a quarter of, of, of that, that cost. Now the state will be taking care of 100% of that cost. So, so that, that's a significant policy improvement. We had a couple of auto-related items on our public safety agendas as well, on catalytic converters and aftermarket mufflers. Of course, Matt Mahoney and myself spent considerable time in, in the past on a catalytic converter task force that came up with a variety of recommendations. Some of those recommendations did go forward and were, were passed into a new law this year that, that actually considerably strengthens regulations around catalytic converters, making them harder to sell, and for people with a, a large number of catalytic converters that they can't account for, that, that can actually be a felony now. So, so that, that's a, that's a considerable change from, from past law. And aftermarket mufflers in a 60-day session and with a variety of competing other issues, that's an issue that we will take up for a future year. Also on, on policy issues, we had a, a blanket statement to, to work hard on those airport issues that can help in mitigating the health and environmental impact that, that Des Moines residents face because of Sea-Tac Airport. Karen Kaiser and Tina Orwell were prime sponsors of, of a bill to address port packages. And this is an issue, of course, that Counselor Harris has worked on for, I believe, decades at this point, maybe as old as some of the port packages even, but, okay. But that was really a groundbreaking bill, and it evolved very significantly over the course of the session. And it took more than a village, it took several villages. And, and we worked closely with the city of Sea-Tac, other communities, Burian and Federal Way were helpful as well, but, but really was, it was ourselves and Sea-Tac, along with all legislators who were the, the main drivers, of course. Community groups, both Mayor Buxton and Counselor Harris were down in Olympia half-dozen times, maybe even more, actually, with, with all the different testimony that had to take place on this. The Port of Seattle was adamantly against it to begin with, and very happily, as discussions continued on the bill, they, they became a supporter. And, and frankly, it probably wouldn't have passed unless we were able to, to come together on, on, on an overall package that could be agreed. But, but this, this will, excuse me, is a major step in the right direction. The state did put $1 million behind this program as well. The port, to their credit, has put up $5 million. And so that, that's a first program of its kind in, in the country. And, and that wouldn't have happened without hard work from the mayor, Counselor Harris, other counselors were, were involved over, over time as well. And some people in the, in this, this room and other community activists who were very, very active on this. So it's, it's, it's wonderful to see a, a community-supported bill like that actually make it through. And, and as I think many of you have seen over the years, it's really hard to get a bill passed the first time that, that you introduce it. Often, a bill takes at least two, three, four, sometimes six sessions before you can actually get it all the way through. This was introduced and passed in the same session, and is only 60 days. So again, real kudos to Kaiser, Orwell. Gregerson was also a sponsor, and several other legislators as well, but, but Kaiser and Orwell were, were the real, real drivers on that. Other airport issues, $6 million is out there for grants in helping address the impact of ultrafine particles and other aviation-related impacts. And, and that, that is for South King County communities really around the airport. And Tina Orwell was, was the, the main mover in getting that $6 million in, in the House side. And again, that, nothing like that has happened before, so, so that's a big deal. Caveat on that $6 million is it can only be spent if the Climate Commitment Act dollars are not repealed in November. So maybe in January, we can start applying for those, or work with community groups to apply for those. But we'll see, it, it depends on the results of the election. Also, on a wider basis, there's $44 million specifically for school indoor air quality, but that's statewide. $500,000, that is set aside only for schools that are under the flight path of Sea-Tac So, okay, that was the session. Looking ahead, so what's, what's coming up the next few months? Well, we're in an election season, and it, it's a, it's a huge election season. Four statewide offices are, are open. All 98 House seats, and almost half of the, of the Senate seats are up for reelection. There have been a lot of retirements, retirements or people running for higher office. But it, it, it changes, but, but there, there are approximately 25 legislators that we don't expect to, to be back next session. Either they've, they've got a higher office, or, or they've, they've retired. And unusually, there's some huge names. Frank Chop, longest-serving speaker in Washington State history. Frank is retired, Representative Chop is retiring. Andy Bilig, who the majority leader in the, in the Senate. J.T. Wilcox, longstanding Republican leader. And most impactful for our community, of course, is Karen Kaiser. And Karen has been a senator for, for 30 years, or she, she has been a legislator for 30 years. And she has been wonderful to work with, and will be missed greatly. And she has done so much for, for the city of Des Moines over, over time. Great partner in helping to get funding for a variety of different projects. I understand that Karen will be here personally on, for the meeting on, on May 2nd, to, to give her own report. But that's, that's a lot of leadership, a lot of talent that will not be in, in the legislature next year. And, and there, there will be a scramble on leadership, and, and with that many senior people going out, it's, it's actually, even as a political junkie insider, there, there's a lot of question marks on, on who's going to be where. But I, and then, of course, depending on what happens with the initiatives in the election, the, the budget outlook is going to be very much impacted by, by that vote. So as we put our own legislative agenda together for 2025, I would recommend that we, we work on things considerably, considerably earlier than we have done in the past, and, and maybe have a packet that we are generally in agreement on, done by the end of summer. And then perhaps we revisit that at the second week of November. Because there might be some things that at that point we say, okay, realistically, it's not going to happen. Or we might want to put some other things in there. So, but we, we can talk about that more, but that's my recommendation at, at this point. But, but definitely, there, there will be a fundamentally different executive and legislative branch than what we have been used to in recent years. Washington State is also now the, it has gone the longest with one party running the governor's office of any state in the country, which is, is kind of incredible. There hasn't been a Republican governor since, elected since 1980. John Spellman left office in January 1985. But that will probably continue, but, but again, you, you never know. And, and so we'll be watching the, the elections closely, and, and that will have a major impact on, on what we do in the next session. Very briefly on the feds, okay, dysfunction continues. They, they, they did actually pass, pass a budget, they passed the entire budget, which I, I was pleasantly surprised at, but that was just in the last couple of weeks. Of course, that was for, for a budget that started in October, this last October, so. But right before this meeting, I was meeting with, with several, several staff members as we were discussing potential earmark requests, because there, in talking with Congressman Smith's office, he has said that there will be an opportunity to ask for earmarks. We don't know the rules yet and what will qualify, but that will likely come down very quickly, and we will, we will pursue that. But if we think there are questions with the state process, many more questions with the federal process, I, I would hazard a guess that they, they probably won't be able to pass their budget again before the start of the next fiscal year. And then if they don't do it during their lame duck period before January, then it's a new, new Congress, and they can change the rules. There might, who knows, there might be a new president, it might be a new majority. So, but it's, it's still probably worth pursuing some things, and, and we'll be working closely with staff on, on what projects we will make the most, most sense to, to, to pursue. So with that, so bill signing for SB 5955, the port package, and again, wonderful that that passed, congrats to all involved. And with that, happy to take any questions if people want to go into more detail on any of this.
Any questions? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, it's, it's a long meeting, but I just briefly, I was struck by the number 1,200. And I haven't been working on this for decades, but I have been going to Olympia for a while, and I distinctly recall the, the first time I was there, which wasn't that long ago, the number was 400. And is, and, and this was a, an off-year.
Yeah.
So my question is, do you expect that quantity to persist into the future? I mean, in other words, is this an outlier, or is it just people are just throwing up bills left and right?
Yeah. 1,200 is too many bills. And, and, and of course, a small fraction of those actually pass. Many of them are, are copied bills, so, so there's a companion bill in, in one house, that is exactly the same, is mirrored in, in the other house. But, but still, it's a lot of bills, and, and others are, are to signal something. And that the, the, the prime sponsor and Deputy Mayor Steinman is very familiar with, with how Olympia works, and has spent time down there, but, but often, they're put in to signal something, and, and they, they know they're never going to pass, and will probably never even get a, a hearing, but, but there are dozens of those as well. But to answer your question, unless, unless the party leadership cracks down and, and says, okay, members can each do five bills, and, and get people to, to kind of focus of, okay, if I only have this many bills, I'm not going to do these, these bills that have no chance of passing, and it will winnow them down. Leadership generally has not wanted to do that, and as long as that doesn't happen... And as long as that doesn't happen, I think the number of bills will continue to increase.
If I may, I'm just asking because there are only so many hours in the day. And if that's really going to be the case, it conditions like what we might want to be talking about in terms of just scheduling any time at a committee, I mean, will become challenging.
Right. Yeah. And I think Des Moines has been following the right strategy in recent years, and that we've been successful by just picking a few things and really focusing on those. And again, as a mid-sized city, best city in the state, of course, but still, we're a mid-sized city, we need to focus our attention and push on certain things that we want to get done. Because even some of our neighboring cities, I won't name any, but they go in with 50 things they're looking at. And if you're trying to do 50 things, you don't do many of them well. And when there's 1,200 issues out there, you're chasing mosquitoes at that point. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Last April, the mayor and I went to Washington, D.C., for the FAA Reauthorization Act, which I believe passed significantly in the House, correct?
It did, yes.
And what's the status of that as far as the -- I think we had seven items on the list that we'd like added in. And what's the status there where we are?
Yeah. As I understand it, in the Senate version, there were five of those, five of the seven items had made it in there. And there was a push to try to get those additional ones through. So that -- but the FAA reauthorization, it, of course, had expired, and it was going forward on continuing clauses. But in a normally functioning Congress, this would have been one of the relatively non-controversial things that really has to be passed, and it would have been passed. But hopefully, that will be wrapped up here relatively soon.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Anthony, thank you. Lots of credit goes to you for anything that we get done down there. You're so supportive, helpful, informative, you're just on top of all of the issues that are important to us. So, I really appreciate your work down there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And as always, it's teamwork. We have a great delegation from the 33rd and the 30th. And I appreciate all of the councilors, because I called on most of you over the course of the session for input and support on different issues. And it's, I think electeds like to hear it from electeds. I testify, it's always much better when you guys testify. So, very good. Okay. But thank you again for all the cooperation in this session.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks, Anthony. I just have one more item. Our acting city attorney is going to provide a very brief presentation on item number five on the consent calendar. We have an ordinance on there, but I wanted to have him just give the background real quick to address why we need to make this change.
Matt Hodgins, acting city attorney, with the staff's presentation on draft ordinance If, after reading the packet, you have deja vu, it's because about 11 weeks ago, I was here with a draft ordinance that was meant to keep our traffic safety camera program in compliance with state law. Well, since then, the legislature has decided they want some more changes. And so, I told Tim I'd keep it quick. So, here's what you need to know. What's relevant in this bill is the bill repeals the 1RCW section where all of the rules about traffic safety cameras are kept, and it is reenacting them in six different RCWs that we don't know the numbers of quite yet. It's not been codified. Not a huge problem, but it will make some references in our code not strictly correct. So, we're going to, we should probably fix that. Substantively, fines for traffic cameras right now are up to $250. The new law caps it, almost all of them at $145, which is not going to do anything to our red light cameras, but it does wipe out the nice tiered structure this council put in place for our park zone cameras. There is an exception to that. School zone cameras, tickets can go up to $290. This is actually a raise on the cap. Importantly, there are new restrictions on what can be done with the revenue from cameras. We can still use the revenues to install, maintain the cameras, to issue and adjudicate the citations. But the money that's left over after that for new cameras, it has to be used for infrastructure, new construction, maintenance, design, thus designed to calm traffic and promote safety. So, essentially, improving our roads, improving intersections, sidewalks. But there is an allowance for only red light cameras and school zone cameras that are in effect before June 6th, the effective date of this ordinance. If a city has, in their ordinance authorizing the cameras, set out what the revenues can be used for, that can continue. And one more important thing, 25% of net proceeds from the cameras, four years after the cameras are in operation after the effective date of the ordinance, 25% of it has to go to the state for a special traffic safety fund. So, the draft ordinance, what we are proposing to do, we're going to correct the references to RCW 4663170. We're going to put the caps where the state says penalties need to be. We are going to put the restrictions in for any new cameras we put in to the Safe Streets purposes. We are maintaining for our existing school zone cameras, our red light cameras, the ability of the council to use those funds for what council has previously said they can be used for traffic safety purposes. But council could also, if they chose, use them for the new traffic calming program. We will be remitting 25% of the proceeds as required by the state. The good news on this, though, is that as the law is now, when our park zone cameras go live, current law says that 50% of those net revenues go to the state right now. So, we're getting a little bit of an improvement on that. And the reason we are bringing this forward today is other parts of this state law that I've not talked about is going to require that every city, every jurisdiction that has cameras in the state are going to have to change language on the back of the citations, get them to the administrative office of the courts, and have them approved, and then put them into production essentially before June 6th ideally, which is going to cause quite a lot of work for AOC, and people getting their paperwork in towards the back may be running into a lot of trouble. But we have been working with AOC and our court, and we feel pretty good that if we get this done right away, we will be able to get in early and hopefully have very little delay in getting our park zone cameras going, or we may be able to avoid any delay at all. So, that is my presentation. This is the motion that will be in the consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Harris.
I just want to confirm and, you know, just triple confirm, does this truly afford us the opportunity to add three new camera sites if they meet the risk analysis?
Yes. The state law does allow cities to add one camera for every 10,000 population, so long as they meet certain equity criteria and they are, there's facts to support that they're a greater danger because of speed.
I would, just speaking rhetorically, I would strongly encourage my colleagues to consider that possibility. Thank you very much.
I'm taking just a moment, taking notes here. Thank you for your patience. So, thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that I'm understanding, the reason for doing this is to comply with the newly passed state law, correct?
That's correct.
And the reason we have to do it tonight is to get ahead of everybody else that's going to have to change their tickets to conform to state law so that we can enact things like the Redondo Park cameras in a timely fashion.
That's correct. We probably wouldn't run into trouble with our existing cameras, but this very much could hold up our park zone cameras if we get caught up in the big wash of changes coming through.
All right. Well, I agree with Councilmember Harris. We need to adopt this ASAP and get ahead of that curve as fast as we can.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. That moves us forward to the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, senior services advisory committee appointments. Item three, Black Wellness Week proclamation. Item four, public drainage easement. Item five, updating the city's automatic traffic safety camera program. And that concludes the consent agenda. Mayor?
Thank you. Is there any item that a council member wishes to pull from the agenda? Okay. If not, I do have, quickly before we take a motion, I do, I would like to acknowledge, we do have a senior services advisory appointment tonight. I would like to recognize Barton DeLacy, who is attending the meeting tonight. If you could stand, we'd like to thank you for your service. So, do you have a motion? Councilmember Nettin.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mahoney. Thank you. All in favor? Raise your right hand. It's unanimous, 7-0. Thank you. The consent agenda passes as read. And I have a proclamation on that agenda to read tonight. Whereas the tradition of Booker T. Washington's Negro Health Week has historically spotlighted health disparities in the black community, fostering advocacy and education. And whereas holistic well-being encompassing physical, mental, emotional, and social health is a priority for all communities. And whereas addressing health disparities in Washington State, especially within the black community, calls for initiatives that are both inclusive and resource-conscious. And whereas, a community-driven approach focusing on leveraging existing resources and capacities is essential for the effective implementation of Black Wellness Week. And now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims April 15th through the 19th, 2024, as Black Wellness Week, and urges all residents to join them in this special observance. Signed this 11th day of April, 2024, Tracy Buxton, Mayor. So, we are, I'm going to pass this to you. We have a special version, a special signed version for you, and we would like to offer the opportunity for some photos. Would you like to do that? Come on down with the council. We have guests here tonight who are here to receive this. Come together, council. Thank you for celebrating with us. The next item up on the agenda is the city manager recruitment update and assistant Johnson-Newton, and Dave Twon. Oh, we need, excuse me, we need to get some tech set up for this part of the presentation tonight, so we need about five minutes. Pardon? Oh, mute your mics, please. is the city manager recruitment update, and Assistant Manager A.J. Johnson Newton and Dave Twon. Oh, we need, excuse me, we need to get some tech set up for this part of the presentation tonight, so we need about five minutes. So, pardon? Yes. Pardon? Oh, mute your mics, please.
[laughter]
All right. Thank you for celebrating with us. Okay, the next item up on the agenda is the city manager recruitment update, and Assistant Manager A.J. Johnson Newton and Dave Twon. Oh, we need, excuse me, we need to get some tech set up for this part of the presentation tonight, so we need about five minutes. So, pardon?
Recession?
Yes. Pardon? Oh, mute your mics, please.
Hey, Dave, this is Dale, the IT guy. Can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me? Dale, can you hear me? Anything?
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
I can't get any indication.
David, if you can hear us, can you give us a thumbs up?
Okay, ITs. Okay, we're all set. If you want to take your seats. Okay, we are reconvening the meeting. We are ready to go for, with the next item.
We are reconvening the meeting. We are ready to go for, with the next.
Nothing like hearing your own. We are reconvening the meeting. We are ready to go. I can't resist. [laughter]
Yes, Lord.
[laughter] You want me to try again? Okay, so.
What's the deal with two mics?
Okay, well, I'll explain that in just a moment. Are we still echoing? So, I'm going to go ahead and try it, all right? We're reconvening the meeting for the next item. We are working with Dave Twon from SGR. He is virtual. Hi, Dave. He's up on the screen. And in order to make this work, we've got two microphones here. So, when, when a council member from the dais up here is speaking, you will need to make sure that both microphones are on in order for this to work. Okay, so each time, if I call on you, you'll need to turn both of them on, and then when you're done, both off. Okay, did I do anything else you need on that before we introduce? Okay, so the purpose of this next item is for the council to have their first meeting with recruitment consultant Dave Twon from SGR. SGR is our recruitment firm that we have contracted to help us find a new city manager. The discussion is going to include the initial steps over the recruitment process and a decision regarding a salary range. So, for the, for the beginning of this presentation, I'm just going to hand it right over to Assistant Manager A.J. Johnson Newton. Thank you.
Good evening, council, community. Dave, thank you for joining us. I will just basically repeat a little bit of what Mayor Buckson just said. This is Dave Twon. He is our consultant that has been assigned.
Mayor Buckson just said, this is Dave Twon. He is our consultant that has been assigned. Mayor Buckson just said, this is Dave Twon.
Okay, well, to reduce the echo, how about I just turn it over to you, Dave? [laughter]
Can you hear me okay? Seems to be a bit of a delay. Can you hear me in the room?
Can you hear me? I'm gonna, I have one speaker on. Can you hear this?
Can you hear me? I'm gonna, I have one speaker on. Can you hear this?
Yes.
Dave, thank you for your patience. We're having some tech issues. We're still working through them. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Dave, could you say something for us so we can see how it's working from your end?
Dave, could you say something for us so we can see how it's working from your end?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good?
Thanks for your patience, Dave. I think we're going to try a little bit, something a little different. So, we're going to take another five-minute recess and work through some of these. Thank you. Appreciate your patience and all of you in here. Dave, can you hear me? Dave, if you can hear me, can you put a thumbs up? Okay, we're about ready to reconvene. Come on back up to the dais, council members.
Okay, so, the change is, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Perfect. So, council members, if they're interacting now, please ignore this microphone and just use this one. Okay? Good. And I am going to hand it back over to Assistant Manager. A.J. Good evening, council and community. I'd like to talk to you tonight to introduce you to Dave Bond. He is our assigned executive producer in SGR, and he will be working with the council as we begin our search for the next new manager. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Dave.
All right, well, thank you. And can you hear me now?
Yes.
We're good? All right, great. Well, Mayor Buckson, thank you for, is that an echo?
All right, great. Well, Mayor Buckson, thank you for, you had that echo. All right, great. Well, Mayor Buckson, thank you for, you had that echo. All right, great. Well, Mayor Buckson, thank you for, you had that echo. All right, great. Well, Mayor Buckson, thank you for, you had that.
Thank you for your patience, Dave. I think we're discussing an alternative right now. Try again? Okay, we're going to try again. Go ahead, Dave.
All right. How's this? We'll wait for a second to see if there's an echo. I think we're good. Okay, well, we'll give this a tenth try maybe here. It's the lucky one. Well, thank you for, for having me this evening. I appreciate you putting some time on the schedule this evening. I know you have a busy agenda. So, what I'd like to do is describe what the city manager hiring process might look like. Just give you an overview. I'll give you a little bit of a background on myself, a little bit of a background on SGR, and then stand for any questions that you might have. So, first and foremost, thank you for hiring SGR. This is a very important thing for us to work in local government. SGR, which is Strategic Government Resources, was founded 25 years ago, and our founder was a city manager himself. And in fact, we've been in Des Moines, it's been quite a few years, several years ago, I believe it was 2016, to help the city with their recruitment of a city manager. At that time, we're very pleased to be back. So, SGR is one of the, if not the largest, government recruiting firm in the country. And the power of SGR is really in the outreach and the network that we have. It's, because it's one of the largest, we also have access to a very large pool of professionals throughout the country, not just at the city manager level, but also law enforcement, you know, see, police chiefs, fire chiefs, city engineers. We do a lot of recruitment primarily for cities and primarily for small cities. You see SGR active in a lot, lot of small and rural places, which is. I'm an engineer by education and background, but I very quickly found myself working for a city in western North Dakota. I started as a public works director and became a city administrator and worked in the city of Williston in western North Dakota for the last 10 years. So, I very much enjoyed it. I recently moved to Montana, and now I do this, and I get to work with. So I very much enjoyed it. I recently moved to Montana, and now I do this and I get to work with many cities across the country, which has been really great. And I just really enjoy meeting a lot of different city councils and commissions from across the country. So just a little bit of background on what you can expect in this process. As you engage with me, part of the work that the city does also happens at the city staff level as well. So you may or may not be aware of this, but your city staff has already been active on the recruiting process for the city, city manager position. So the first phase that we really do is the stakeholder engagement phase. And then following that phase, we do what we call a profile or brochure creation. We've kind of started that early, so we've kind of started that profile development phase early before the stakeholder engagement. So some of that work has started with the city staff, bringing some responses to questionnaires that we put out, providing some information in terms of graphics and pictures and just great things that we're going to compile into the brochure that's going to advertise for this position. But the really critical part that we like to start with, that I'm just grateful we have a chance to speak tonight, is what we call stakeholder engagement. So part of this has happened already with the Citizens Advisory Committee a couple of weeks ago, where I had a chance, and I believe Mayor Buxton and a couple of the council members were there, had a chance to visit with that group and just give them this overview of the process. We gave them an opportunity for just a little bit of feedback in the end, and I thought they had some great comments about their city and what they thought were great opportunities for a professional to come in. But the stakeholder engagement process, really, it starts like this. Introductions and just giving you a chance to speak to the position and perhaps bring some of your insights into what you might want to see at the position in terms of, you know, qualities and qualifications and things of that nature. So my proposal to you after today is perhaps we can do this maybe in one-on-one fashion. We can do Zooms or phone calls with each of you. But it sounds like the, the entire council will be that hiring committee, and that might be one way in which we do ongoing stakeholder engagement. So after that stakeholder engagement process, as I mentioned, we launch this brochure or create this brochure, this profile of the position, which describes not only the city, but some of the challenges and opportunities that might be a part of the city manager job. And this is really, a really key piece that not only advertises Des Moines to the, you know, to the country, but it also talks a little bit in more specific terms, you know, what is it like in that, in the city there? What is it like in the community? What are some of the projects that might need some attention? And what are, you know, some of the features of the community that make it stand out from other communities? So we spend a good deal of time on creating this, this profile, and then the job is launched. So the launching of the job entails a lot of advertisement. We not only tap into that SGR network that I talked about with all of the professionals, but we also make use of professional associations, getting into not only state and national level associations, but there's a variety of other advertising platforms that are used to really broadcast the position throughout the country. And following that launching of the job, that advertisement period is, it's really up to the city, but we recommend at minimum 30 days to be out there, just to really get good visibility on the job posting. We start to get applicants coming in, and my job is to start to filter those applicants based on conversations that we have in the stakeholder engagement. So let's say, you know, the, the council determines that it's really important that somebody with economic development background, you know, or qualifications or credentials at a, at a minimum level, you know, is the type of candidate that they're looking for. I'll then take some of that criteria and start screening those candidates for you. Let's say we get 25 candidates. You may not wish to interview 25 people. So I'll start triaging that, as we say, and getting you the best of those candidates so that you can focus your time on scrutinizing and interviewing just the best people. So we work towards what we call a semifinalist phase, where we give you between five and seven good candidates to interview or to select from, and work that down to three to do in-person interviews. And I'm, of course, there on the ground with you for the final interviews as well. And after that, when you've made a choice on the best candidate, I can be there also to help you through the negotiations, whether that's through the contract part or just the logistics. And SGR also handles all the communication with the candidates who are unsuccessful. So the timeline for this process, it really depends. It's typically up to the city on how long they want to do advertisements. But, you know, it can, it can vary from city to city. It sounds like you have a very great and capable staff there handling things in the meantime. So I really appreciate that you're taking a deliberate approach to this. Gives us a little bit of time to maybe reach out a little bit more through advertisements and be a little more careful with our selection process. So I'll stop there, and if you have any questions, I'll, I'll stand for those.
So city manager, did you have anything else that you wanted to add to those comments before I open it up to questions for Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be providing the council tomorrow with a link to what we call Box. It's a shared folder. The city position, or the city manager profile is in there. We've already started answering some questions, but it is in draft form. So the council, you know, has the option to edit any of that information. That is the document that Dave was referring to, that they're going to build the brochure from. Additionally, there's tons of photos in there that the council can select from, that they'd like to see, and the recruitment brochure. Dave will also have access to that shared folder. One of the things I talked about with Dave today was thinking about doing, maybe every other meeting, having him on the calendar, and then in between those meetings, either I could give the update or give the council their homework assignment so we can keep moving. And probably the other change we would do is just putting Dave a little bit earlier in the meeting, and now that we have the tech figured out, so that's pretty cool. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. So Dave, before I just open up to any question at all, there were, there were a couple of documents and five basic questions from both the client information profile and the recruitment memo. And so I'm wondering if you tonight are seeking answers to those five questions or any question?
Not tonight, no. And thank you for asking that, Mayor. Really, the only thing I'd like to ask you tonight is if there is a way in which you would like to engage with me, whether that's through AJ or if there's a streamlined process, and I mentioned this to AJ. Sometimes cities prefer to do a subcommittee and delegate this task, which is, you know, one way to do it. If the whole council wants to be the hiring committee, that's okay, too. But that would be my only question, is how would you like to be engaged in this process? Not the stakeholder part, but just the, the decision-making as we go. And, and most of the decision-making is at the end, really, when we get to the, the interviews and so forth.
Okay, so along the way, I guess my, are you going to operate in phases, and you're going to have a set of questions that you need to have answered on a regular basis? Because we meet about almost every week. We have a couple of weeks every once in a while we do not meet. If you can come to the council meetings with a set of questions that you provide to us ahead of time, we can be prepared to answer them for you. Is that suitable for you?
That works for me.
And then, oh, gosh, there was one other thing. Oh, you had mentioned a subcommittee. We've already decided against that. So we prefer to be briefed and answer questions as a, as a body, a whole body here. So that's that answer. Are you asking us also if we would like the privilege of talking to you one-on-one? I'm not sure you're offering us that, or are you?
I am, yeah. And, and really, that's for what I call the stakeholder engagement, which would be, tell me about Des Moines. Tell me about the city administrator post. What things, as a council member, you know, would you like to tell those applicants? This is for the creation of the brochure. So it's not, it's not about the interview. It's not about the selection part. That would just be a more dedicated setting for the various council members to give me some input that I can then put in the brochure.
Okay, I'm, I'm possibly still going to recommend that you, instead of having an open invitation to several different people to call you individually and give you their opinion about something, it would be really nice for all of us to be able to hear every question that is asked of you and to hear your answer. So, and that way you also don't spend time answering seven of the same questions. So unless it's super inconvenient for you, I would like to recommend, and then get my colleagues' feedback on this, I would like to recommend that you bring sets of questions to us that you would like to have answered and then open it up for our questions to you, that we all hear everything. Do, now that's my recommendation, knee-jerk. Do I have any input from my council colleagues? Okay, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris, and then just use this microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, I missed your attention. Citizens Advisory Committee, thank you, Dave. I do think it would be a useful process for everybody to take a one-on-one Zoom with Dave to discuss our individual concerns. And, you know, if you're hearing the same thing over and over again, you're getting a trend. So that's important for you to understand. And if you're hearing different concerns, and I think we have a lot of very different personalities up here, so you will hear different concerns. You know, you find a way to sort of work that into the discussion. But I think that that's the point of the stakeholder interviews and listening sessions that I understood from the get-go. And so I, I really think that would be a useful opportunity to do that. And I hate to volunteer anybody, but you seem to be working with a really, really good staff member of ours. If you would be so kind as to help coordinate that, for the city manager.
Great input. Councilmember Harris.
I would agree with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz that I would have no objection to my Q and A being, you know, on the record, a public recording. But I would benefit from having that one-on-one opportunity. I would also ask the interim city manager if having some kind of executive session at some point about Q and A might not be an appropriate thing. This is just one time where you want to be able to have a certain amount of candor just in thinking out loud about your questions. I don't, I don't object to having anything I say, you know, on the record, but you also want to be able to think out loud once in a while, formulating the thoughts. So that's just my, my input. If that were possible, I would welcome an opportunity to. Thank you.
Any other input or, any other input or questions? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Hi, this is Yoshiko Grace Matsui. I don't want to say the same thing the third time, but I would agree that I think it is essential for us to have some opportunity to speak with you, whether it's one-on-one or in small groups. I also would like to know a little bit more about what is planned for the stakeholder interviews and listening sessions that are happening in total. Like, what is the plan? What is the appraised timeline for that? So that folks can get ready if they're going to be participating in any sort of survey or a listening session, and the public could be a part of those things. I'd love to give them as much advance notice as possible. And I, I feel unfortunately like my brain is a little fuzzy about our timeline and where we are. So I'm going to have to dig through my files to find out where our suggested timeline is, so I can kind of get my bearings on where that's built into our recruitment cycle. Thank you.
Okay, so what I would like to do then is, it sounds like there is a general consensus or desire to have one-on-one Zoom interviews with you for each council member. Are you, is that good for you, Dave?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then, in regard to the executive session recommendation, city manager, do you think, is that something that would be down the road? Let me ask you first, could you give a little bit more clarity, Councilmember Harris, on your request? Is it just an open request, or do you want to think about it?
It was more of a question, if it's, if it's appropriate to have the seven of us just have, have questions in private as part of this hiring process. Because I think there'll be, you know, reactions that many of us will have that we want to be able to ask about, and just, like I say, in terms of thinking out loud.
Okay. And before I turn that question over to the city manager, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, and thank you for agreeing, at least on the one-on-one. I'm not clear what you're saying. Are you, at what point in the process would you think that the executive session piece would play in? And does it involve working with the recruitment firm or working with the candidates that are presented? Because I conceive why it might be valuable later, but not at this point. And, and that's what I'm trying to understand, what you're looking at.
I, I honestly don't know. I was just, in my mind, there's like a list of, a vague list of 15 appropriate uses of executive session, and I don't know if this applies. Just wanted to have another possible tool. I'm not asking for a decision at this point. I just, just asking if it was possible.
Well, I think I can shed some point on that. No. The council can meet an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant. So that's the point when, when it would make sense for, well, and it would be legal for the council to meet, talk about individual applicants. But when you're talking with our consultant early on about, you know, what you'd like to see or the process, that, that would either need to be done one-on-one or here at the dais.
Okay, so a little bit to Councilmember Grace Matsui's question about the steps in the process. The information that was provided in the package tonight seemed to cover steps one through four of the phases. And I think there was about step eight, talks about stakeholder interchange and engagement. And so I guess I want to clarify one more time with you, Dave. There were questions like, what makes this community special? Why would a candidate want to live here? Unique services offered? Some of the questions that you would ask the Citizens Advisory Committee? Feedback for the brochures and photos. Is that all something that you are going to be asking us to interface with this app that the assistant manager is providing for us? Or is this something that you're going to come back and ask us for input on these five questions?
Mayor, not specific to those questions. Those were questions I asked in the moment to the Citizens Advisory Committee because we had limited time and I was there. But are you hearing an echo as well?
Go ahead and keep going as you can. Do the best you can here, Dave. Thanks.
The questions that I have for you aren't necessarily listed. I can certainly provide them in writing. What I was hoping through our conversations would be what was described as a listening session. I love that term. Would just be to ask you in general some things about the position, how you interact with it, hear your thoughts on it, hear your thoughts on projects that might be important to you, and really just have an open dialogue.
And are you planning on doing that through the one-on-one Zoom sessions? It looks like we have a consensus about that, or do you want to do that in a general group session?
One-on-one would be great, but again, I'll follow your lead, Mayor, if you have a preference.
No, that, that kind of takes care of the steps that I had outlined here today. So I think for all of the other steps that were listed in the memo, we're going to be meeting with you on a regular basis. And in regard to this, almost every single council meeting. So I think when it gets closer, I, I do want to focus on Councilmember Grace Matsui's timeline. Do you have a timeline where we need to establish if we're going to create a community stakeholder group? When does that need to be done by?
I guess I would ask, are you creating a community? I guess I would ask, are you creating a community stakeholder group? Would you like to do that? Is that something? And I would just ask what that is and how that would interact with my role.
Well, it isn't, it isn't something that we have discussed yet. So I'm, I'm guessing it would be during the final interview process, that you would have a community stakeholder panel interview. But that needs to be decided by the council. The reason I'm asking is, is there a timeline for something like that?
Not yet.
If we decided we wanted to do it, is there a timeline where that needs to be assembled?
I don't have a timeline for you yet. And typically, the city sets the timeline, but I can work with you and your staff to determine that timeline. We can run through some scenarios of what advertising might look like, and when it is that you would like to have an admini, or a city manager hired. And from there, we can work back into a timeline. But as of today, there, there is no timeline set yet.
I think that the, the next item that I think council members may want to ask you about has to do with the salary range, which we need to decide about tonight. So before we move to that subject, though, I want to make sure that council members have one more crack at asking you questions or getting clarity from either you or the assistant manager. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just to follow up with the timeline discussion, I, I think a lot of us are hoping we can have the hire made by July the 1st. Are we within target?
Yes, I believe that's, that's a reasonable timeline.
So Assistant Manager, I think we're ready to move into the segment where we're talking about the salary range decision here. Ready for that?
I can do the presentation, but I won't be able to show the PowerPoint while Dave is on. If the council is fine, I can at least talk through the options without the PowerPoint, just generally, and maybe, Dave, you could comment on, I know that you can't necessarily say, is that competitive within our market? But in terms of what you're seeing out in the general market and sort of the ranges that you've been accustomed to from other cities, if the options that we're proposing to the council to adopt would generate us, you know, what type of talent would it generate us? In other words, up-and-coming talent would be in the, would be in the range to get like proven seasoned talent? And is that something that you feel that you could provide if I give you sort of the options that they're considering?
Yes.
Am I okay doing that for you guys, Mayor? So, Dave, I've already provided the current city manager salary, so that's one of the options, which is to basically keep status quo. And that range currently is 227,694 to 276,759. So that's one of the options that's been presented to council. The second option is to drop that down about 5% on both sides, or excuse me, 4%. And it would take it to 218,577.91. And the, and the max would be 265,678.63. The third option is for the council just to use one of those hiring ranges and then basically do a flat dollar amount. When we were out doing some research out on the market, there were a lot of cities that don't actually have a range. They just have a flat dollar amount. And then the fourth option is to basically combine both of those ranges, which I just mentioned to you. So we would drop the entry point down to 218,577.91. And we would hold at the max of the top salary of 276,759. But the council would want to keep the hiring range between 218,577.9 and 253,024. And that's the last option.
So, Dave, if you could respond to that a little bit, what your, what, what is your, just your professional opinion based on those offerings? And how does that look out in the market?
Well, Mayor, you have a very healthy salary range, and I think that's going to provide a competitive and attractive salary for candidates in the entire range. You're going to have experienced candidates who are going to want to apply at that upper range. And I know this is kind of a generic answer, where you're going to get obviously experienced candidates for the higher salary, and you might get some at the lower salary. But that is a higher range and a more flexible range than we typically see. So in that regard, you're in a very good position to work within that range. My guess would be somewhere in that 260, 250 to 260 ranges is likely going to be where you're, you're going to find a seasoned candidate with, you know, 10-plus years' experience, particularly unfortunately with the housing market these days, and trying to draw someone from a different part of the country. Perhaps they'll have to sell a house, move, and so on. That's usually going to add some cost to things. So, so again, this is a great range, both options that the assistant manager described. I would, I would be very much in favor of either one of those. They're both great.
Thank you. So council members, does anybody have any specific questions for Dave in regard to that? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, Dave, you gave us the scenario for some, a seasoned 10-year, that what if it's an up-and-comer who is moving up from an assistant city manager with a fair amount of responsibility and a, and a decent portfolio, but they haven't actually had the top job yet, but you think that might do it? What sort of range would that person be looking for? Again, moving into a housing, expensive, expensive housing area.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if that individual is from within your region and at that lower end of experience, my gut feel response would be between 200 and 225 would likely be that salary range they're looking at. And it could depend, you know, if they have a very specific skill set. Maybe they have, you know, a master's degree or an MBA or something like that, that's, you know, a little harder to acquire. So that could draw in a little bit more. But I would say the, the lower range would be 200 to 225.
Any other questions for Dave in regard to the salary range decision? Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Feel free to ignore Dave, but you know, the reason I raised the concept of executive session, I, I, as well as a number of residents, we have definite feelings about this salary thing. And this is exactly the topic that I would love to be able to ask questions in private without, this is, this is literally the thing. But, you know, other than that, thank you very much for your efforts, sir.
All right. Assistant Manager, it looks like our questions at this point have been exhausted for Dave. He's done a great job in presenting. Do you have anything else that you'd like to say? Not for this portion of the presentation, Mayor. Okay. So, Dave, if you're good, unless you have any questions for us, I think you've been great for us tonight. Appreciate it. Do you have any other questions for us?
I don't. Thank you for the time this evening.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Appreciate it. So, AJ, are you good with? Oh, thank you. Now's the time. Okay, so now we do need to take another five-minute break in order to rearrange back into our normal configuration technologically here. So thank you for your patience. Thank you. It's not. Please find your seats. Thank you very much.
You really want to violate rights for him?
Ms. Rogers, we're trying to get this meeting going here.
Oh, I was fine. Dave approached me, and we were discussing during break, when everybody else was discussing, and in fact, their volumes were as low as a half a million. But yet, I was told that I was being disruptive. And I would like to continue on and be able to sit here silently and not disrupt the meeting. And so I'm requesting that Dave be asked to let me leave, so that I may be asked.
Okay, this is fine. We are reconvening the meeting without disruption, without further disruption. Okay, in regard to the city manager recruitment update we did receive, we received an update from our recruiter and some information from our assistant city manager. I think we have a couple of questions we still need to address, so I'm going to hand it back over to the assistant city manager, AJ Johnson Newton. Thank you.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're asking the council to make a decision on the 2024 city manager salary schedule. Next slide, please. This is a bit of a recap last, from last week, but we were.
I'm asking that there be.
I'm being harassed by non, by non-specificalism.
Right now, right now, I'm going to ask everybody to stop talking. They don't, they're stand. So, that's up to you, Tim, there, your employees. Can you please stop talking right now?
Stop talking and then walk away, can we do?
No, we can't. So it's up to you if you would like to stay here or not. I'm asking for, I am asking you. No, we can't. So, it's up to you if you would like to stay here or not. I'm asking for, I am asking you to make a decision to either. I'm the presiding over the meeting. Please stop talking. If you do not stop talking, I am going to have you removed from the meeting, Ms. Rogers. If you say one more thing, I am going to ask you to be removed from the meeting. All right. Assistant manager, please continue.
Thank you. So if you recall, last week, we discussed the importance of reviewing the current city manager salary range to ensure that our base salary and our overall compensation is competitive within the market. We know while there are a number of motivators that drive people to look at positions for employment, salary typically tends to be the number one motivator, at least initially when they're looking at the job posting. We went over the mechanics of establishing a salary range, and so I'm just going to review. Some of this will be redundant, but if you're just joining us for the first time. You want to assess the limitations related to budget, resources, and wage compression. You know, I basically want to make sure we can afford to offer the salary range. We also need to consider the wage compression. Essentially, the city manager's role has the highest scope and responsibility, so you want the salary to reflect that, and you also have to keep in mind the positions afterwards. So that's the wage compression component. You want to determine the value the position creates. You need to research the market. Once you get a sense of what your maybe baseline salary that you're looking at offering. You want to be realistic about the candidate qualifications and salary requirements. Essentially, going back to the previous presentation, you want to think about what your salary is going to look like on the market in terms of, are you going to be attracting up and coming talent that's looking for an opportunity to showcase that talent? Or are you looking for someone that's seasoned and proven, or proven and maybe have held the role before? And then you want to be flexible in your compensation because you don't know who you're going to attract, and you want to have the ability to negotiate if you need to, because the candidate, whomever you guys end up selecting, is probably going to have some salary requirements as well. Next slide, please. So the options that were permitted, or presented, excuse me, to the council to consider was to basically keep the same salary grade, adjust the salary grade down one range, adopt a flat dollar amount, and adopt it, or, excuse me, adopt a salary range and a hiring range. Next slide, please. So this is option one. This is the current salary assigned to the city manager role. As you can tell, it's 227694 is the entry level point, and the max is 276759. Next, uh, next slide, please. Option two is, this is the decrease by about 4%. So the entry level would be 21857791, and the max salary on this would be 26567863. Next slide, please. The, another option the council could consider is establish a hiring range, and upon hiring, adopt the hiring salaries a flat amount. So in other words, we'd advertise the city manager hiring range is 22769, between 227694 to 276759. The D O Q means depending on qualifications. And let's say the candidate accepts our offer of 239073. That salary becomes a flat amount, and any movement for the candidate or for the employee at that point would be based on what was set up in their employment agreement. So the min and the max would be 239073. Next op, or next slide, please. Option four is to establish a broad but competitive salary range for the position. Essentially, the salary range would be 21857791, and the max would be 276759. One thing I would say is I would not recommend hiring at the max if we can avoid that. But, so that would be the salary range, and within that salary range, we would cut it and ca, and create a hiring range. So we'd be willing to hire someone from 2185779 to 25302431. It wouldn't prevent the council from raising that 253024 to somewhere between 253 and 276759, but essentially, it sort of sets the parameters for the candidates. This is where we would like to hire. Next slide, please. So option four was recommended for the following reasons. It can be supported by the current budget. It considers wage compression. We believe it reflects the value and the scope of the position. It's competitive within the market, which I'll show you some more information about that shortly. It allows the council the ability to attract candidates of varying skill sets and qualifications. So again, that up and coming talent versus sort of that proven seasoned talent. I think it's broad enough that you can capture one or the other or anything in between. And then it's flexible enough to provide bandwidth for the council because you should anticipate that whomever you select will probably have some salary requirements and things that they would want to negotiate. Next slide, please. So I want to just go back to researching the market. So the steps that we took before I came to council with these recommendations is that we sent out a 2024 city manager salary benefit survey to over 50 Washington state municipalities. It might be closer to 70, but at least 50. And we received 15 responses back. We compiled the data to include the city's current city manager salary range, and essentially, I ranked various data points to see how the current salary range compares, in air quotes, to other municipalities. I did that same methodology for option two and option four. So I basically played with the numbers to see where we ended up in the market. And then within the 15 responses that we received back, I cut out a cross section of the cities whose population was 150% plus or minus hours with some creative license, because I wanted to include Burian because they're our neighbors. They're not quite in that mythology. To try to make an apples-to-apples comparison, one thing that may come up is like, well, why 150% plus or minus? That's a standard formula used in negotiations and recognized by PERC. And so just to carry on sort of that mythology in our own practices, because we know that when there's labor disputes, that is something that the arbitrator recognizes. So it's not a random figure. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's option one. So what you're looking at is these are the 15 cities that responded. They're organized by population, highest to lowest. I, the minimum salary and the maximum salary is included. Any of the cities that are in blue, which is a little bit hard to tell, but are ones that have flat amounts. So that was that option three. So I ranked them by population, and then I ranked the minimum entry point, 1 through 16, highest to lowest, and same for the ma, the max rankings. So if you look at our city currently, we're 10th in population, at least for the people who responded. And our entry point as it is now, we'd be 10th highest compared to everyone else, where you would come in on the salary range, but we max out at the fourth highest with the current salary range. Next slide, please. So here's that cross section, that 150%. So these are people that have, they're, not people, excuse me, municipalities whose population is a little bit more similar to ours. And so in, in this, with the current city manager salary, we're fifth in population. We'd be sixth in the entry point, and we'd be one. So we'd have the highest salary at the maximum compared to these cities that are much closer to our population. Next slide, please. This is option two, so this was lowering the salary, I think, by 4%. Essentially, what that ends up doing, obviously, our population doesn't change. We're still ranked number 10 in this. It drops us down one on the entry point to 11, and it drops us down one, so from four to five on the, on the high end compared to the other 15 cities. Next slide, please. So same drill here, the cross section, number five in population of those cities that would be closest to our population size. Lowering the salary puts us at number seven of eight on the entry point into the salary, and the max still remains at number one. Next slide, please. This is option four. Of course, again, the population doesn't change. We remain number 10. The min, we drop down one to, from 10 to 11. That's from the current city manager. And then the max, rather than, I think we're four, I have to go back and look, this moves us down to seven. So we're kind of in the middle of the pack with this, with the hiring range. That's what's in here. Next slide, please. And then this is the cross section. So essentially, we'd still at the bottom of sort of our comparable cities, for lack of a better word. We'd be number seven out of eight in the entry point at 218, but we'd max out on the hiring range that's being proposed at three rather than one. Of course, if the council exercised their ability to move higher up that range to like the 276, then the rankings would probably move from three to two or one. Next slide, please. Is there any questions?
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Lots of questions tonight. On option number four, how does the, once we've hired somebody, if we're using option number four, how does his salary range, his or her, sorry, you know, go up or down? Is that a contract negotiation piece? Is there anything built in? Because we're not really giving them steps. How does that work?
So currently, it's a stepped model, but in the code, it actually says that you guys essentially control the salary range. It doesn't say how the movement has to happen on it. So essentially, you could go away from steps and just say this is a hiring range, and just as an example, I'm not saying this is what you could do, but you could maybe decide that, you know, next year, the highest merit increase we would give is 4%. And you could move someone based on that percentage increase, or you could adopt the 10 steps that we already have built into the ranges that we have available now.
Do you want to, okay, go ahead, and then Councilmember Harris after that.
When you say a merit increase, that's not a COLA, and this position wouldn't necessarily be subject to a COLA unless that was agreed in the contract. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. And I hope I, is there language in the, just as early in the process, in the application that essentially tells applicants, look, there is, don't use the DMMC as the model, as an implicit expectation? In other words, what you see in the DMMC with, with steps and so forth may not necessarily be a part of this offering.
So we took your recommendation, Councilmember Harris, and we pulled down the salary schedule. And so the plan is, once we figure out what the range is going to be, we will put it back up, but what we can do is just remove the steps and just advertise it as a range. And then that gives the council the flexibility, I think, they will need to figure out what, once we get someone on board, how you guys want to address the movement. So the thing that we can communicate to them is what the minimum amount is that you could make, and what the maximum amount you can make, and here's what we want to hire. But in terms of how you move along that range or scale or whatever, we wouldn't have that broken out in steps. We'd just show it as a range.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to beat on it. I'm just concerned about implicit expectations that we somehow, somehow telegraph that, you know, this is what we're likely to do, and I wouldn't want any applicants or at any, at any point in the process to feel blindsided if we wanted to change direction. Thank you.
Yeah, then I, then I would say that we need to make sure that the, that the council's committed to whichever decision you make. So assuming you go with option four, that we advertise it exactly how, what the council's committed to, which is here is our salary range, here's our hiring range, and that is it. So we would just break it off from the rest of the salary schedules and just have it as a standalone, because the rest of the staff are on steps, so.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So since there are no more questions before the motion, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve salary option number four as the 2024 city manager salary range.
I have a second with Councilmember Mahoney. Discussion. Councilmember Harris.
I'm just being rhetorical here in that viscerally, I feel like the floor here is far too high. That said, I'm, and don't, I think that ranking cities by population or anything is the wrong way to look at it. The way I look at the city of Des Moines is in terms of what I used to call in complexity theory. We are an extremely complex organization relative to the amount of revenue we generate at the environment committee. We have all these special purpose districts. We have the compliance of a city of 100,000. And we have our own police force. If you actually look at the headcounts in Burian, which has much higher revenues, they have a lower headcount. So it's, it's, whoever takes over will have some serious management issues in terms of just keeping track of all of this stuff. Apart from, so I'm, I'm just super struggling with this. I'm, I am concerned about that compression and inflation, and creating this implicit idea that we're going to get, we're going to start closing in on huge amounts of money and, and very high headcounts. And so as you can tell, I'm just, I'm like all over the map, but it feels to me like the horse has left the barn or whatever that analogy is, and I wish it hadn't. But I'm not sure that there is a strong correlation between the quality of applicants and the salary offering that, but I could be wrong. I honestly, I, I'm used to having enough information to make good decisions, and I guess what I'm saying in one sentence is, I don't feel like I have anything close to the amount of information that I would need to make a good decision. And if that sounds like I'm copping out, I just want you to know. Yeah, that's, it's, I, I wish I had a better way to evaluate the market and all this other jazz, and since this is all rambling, that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Mahoney.
We need to keep our options open. This is why I'm going to support this motion. If, on the lower range, we've got an up-and-comer that's eager, that's come from an assistant city manager position or maybe a department. But we also, as, as was said before, I agree, it's a very complex job, and we may see that somebody on the higher range can move the city to where we need it to move. By, by having this kind of range and setting it up this way, I think we open up ourselves to the best options. Any restraints more than what we put in this range is going to be detrimental to our choice. Where, there's a lot more to go to this process than this, so forth. I've done these many, many times in my careers, and the salary options, we'll, we'll come to the conclusion as we get to know more. This is a process where we don't even know who the candidates are yet. We don't even know the caliber we're going to see. We, once we start to get an assessment and we get to evaluate and compare some of these people against each other, then it's going to make more sense. But to reduce or eliminate any options, that's why I like this option, sets us up to choose the, and that's what we're after, the best candidate. So I think as the options are, and in this range, this is perfectly normal in this particular time and frame, and I think we've been provided an excellent amount of information to get us to this thing. So I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I also like option four. I think it is, allows us the most amount of flexibility. But, and it also does not build in steps, which I don't think we should have in, I think that was a concern with the last city, full-time city manager, permanent city manager that we had, present company excluded. I think that we do have a fair amount of information, which is the comps, and I really appreciate you going back and getting that information, because we asked about that last week, and, and I think that was very, very helpful. And, and I think that was very, very helpful.
Something went wrong. Please try again.
And then my phone's, yeah. No, I wasn't talking about you, AJ. It wasn't, you did something. But I think I have a decent amount of information to make this. I agree that a broad range gives us the options that'll make a lot more sense once we start comparing candidates. And so I, I am fully supportive of option number four. I think that's a good place for us to start.
All right. Any other comments? I just have a couple then. In 2015, we made an offer to a city manager, and with inflation of about thirty percent since then, that same offer would equal about $230,000. So this range is, is, is right in the middle of that. So it goes below that if we need and above that if we need. And, you know, I had, I think, Councilmember Harris said something about a visceral response. You know, I'll just say, I'm sixty-two years old, and when I was young, you know, I was thrilled to make three twenty-five an hour. So because I've existed in that environment, there's this continual thing as we, we move into different, more different eras. It's like, oh, my goodness, that's a lot of money. But this is where we're living right now. I can, in my neighborhood, when I first moved to Des Moines, you could buy a three-bedroom, bath-and-a-half Rambler with a two-car garage for $40,000. And so it's, it's just hard to keep adjusting, but we must. And, you know, here, one last thing is, you know, I've got, all my kids are, and none of my kids are thirty, but three of them are making well into the six figures. Nobody makes anything with a two in front of it yet, but heavens to Betsy. They're, none of them are thirty. So it's, it's a mental adjustment that I think we need to make as we just continue moving into this era of great inflation. And I appreciate the comps, I appreciate the work, and I appreciate Dave Twann's response to us tonight. So I am in favor of this motion. And if there are no other comments. One more? All right, Councilmember Harris, go ahead.
It may seem irrelevant, but I would, I'm thinking of a colleague from predecessor who said something about will. And I would hope that if we do not obtain the candidates that really, you know, get our hearts to skip a beat as a group, that we have the will to reopen the process. That did not happen in 2015, 2016. And I think it would be better to go through another round as part of this contract than to just arbitrarily say, oh, we have to choose from these three or four people. That's it.
I think that there is an option in our contract with SGR for that, correct? So without, okay, without further ado, then, I would like to take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. I have Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Mott, we, Councilmember Mahoney and myself in favor, all opposed.
I would like to be marked as abstaining.
And all abstain, okay? It sounds like Councilmember Harris is in abstention. And it looks like we have picked a salary range. Do you need any other information?
No, thank you, counsel.
All right. Moving, moving forward, we have a little bit of a time challenge here, so we're scheduled in at nine. Okay, so we have two items on the agenda, both with a suggested motion of passing on to another reading. So there wouldn't be necessarily a need for extended discussion. And then I am going to ask the council if we would like to forego new agenda items for consideration and our council member reports. So with a nod of the head, looks like we have consensus on that. So that would mean we've got two items left with, for going to other readings. So I'm going to ask for probably, what, another, till nine fifteen? Do you think we can do that in fifteen minutes? Oh, because we've got presentations as well. So hmm, the what, nine thirty? And then, and Katie, Katie, Jeff, about how long do you think your presentation is?
I'm prob, I could probably get it in about fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes? Katie, how about you? Where are you? Ten, so that's twenty. Do you want to do that? She's been sitting here the whole time. So what does the council feel about moving the Comprehensive Marina Master Plan to the next meeting? Are we, everybody's in favor of that? Katie, you get a Starbucks card for sitting through all of this and preparing, being prepared for this meeting. So that means we've got one item, property tax levy lid lift with a presentation and a little bit of discussion. Nine thirty? I think nine thirty? Okay, we need to make a motion. Councilmember Nutting, you, you look like you were leaning forward. Councilmember Mahoney.
To extend the meeting till nine thirty and not a minute more.
All right, do I have a second? Second with Councilmember Nutting. All in favor? It's unanimous, seven zero. All right, so we move on to the property tax levy lid lift presentation with Finance Director Jeff Friend. The purpose of this item is for council to consider draft ordinance twenty-four dash zero two zero relating to the approval of placing a ballot measure for property tax levy on the ballot in 2024. Take it away, Jeff.
Okay, this is the second reading for the property tax levy lid lift. Some information in the presentation we've seen prior. A lot of other information is a result of just feedback from the community, questions we've been asked, ideas that have, have come up since the first reading. So we'll, we'll cover all of that. I will try to be as concise and informative as possible. Property tax levy increases. So taxing districts with a population of 10,000 or more may not increase the total levy amount collected from current assessed valuation by more than one percent, or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. So every year, we do a property tax levy as part of the budget process. And if a taxing district is, is wanting to increase their property tax, they are limited to one percent of what was collected the year before, or inflation, whichever is lower. There are two ways to increase property tax levies, more than that one percent limit that is set by state law. One is called banked capacity. So if there's a year where you don't increase the property tax levy by one percent, for example, that creates banked capacity. So that amount that you could have raised is set aside. And in a subsequent year, you're able to access that if the taxing district feels they need to. And the second way to increase property tax greater than the one percent limit is a levy lid lift. So the one percent would be the lid that's being lifted. What is a levy lid lift? A taxing jurisdiction that is collecting less than its maximum statutory levy rate may ask a simple majority of voters to lift the total levy amount collected by more than one percent. The new levy rate cannot exceed the maximum statutory rate. Our, for the city of Des Moines, the maximum statutory rate for the 2024 levy was about $1.84. There are four types of levy lid lifts. There's really two variables. Is it temporary or permanent? And is it single year or multi-year? So a temporary levy lid lift is typically used to fund, say, a capital project. So it's, that project will begin, it'll be in process, and it will be complete, and the levy increase will expire. So it can maybe that, that property tax increase will last, you know, four years, six years, and then it will expire and things will go back to the normal rates. The other two variables are, is it single year or multi-year? So single year refers to the amount of years that you can increase the rate or the collection over one percent. And multi-year allows you to do that up to six years. What, we've reviewed all four of those in previous, in the previous reading. This is the one that we are focusing on for the recommendation, which is a single-year permanent levy lid lift, which sounds like an oxymoron, single year and permanent. But if you look at the third column where the green area shows up, you can see it says one-time bump exceeds one percent annual limit. So that's the one single year where you can raise above the one percent annual limit. And it's permanent, as you see the green in each of the subsequent columns increases according to that one percent limit. Doesn't mean you have to raise it that one percent, but this chart just assumes that the taxing district is increasing one percent. So why a levy lid lift? So this is a quote from the Municipal Research and Services Center. The hundred and one percent limit obviously restricts revenue growth, especially for jurisdictions that are heavily dependent on property taxes and whose costs are increasing more than one percent per year due to inflation, salary and benefits costs, and other factors. For the city of Des Moines, property tax is the largest revenue source, so that fits that description. And general fund expenditures increased six percent in 2022 and thirteen percent in 2023. So you can see that the expenditure increases are outpacing the one percent growth in the main revenue source for the city. Exemptions. Last week, the King County Assessorist here and did a presentation on this topic. State law provides a tax benefit program for senior citizens, persons with disabilities, and disabled veterans. Under the exemption program, the value of a residence is frozen for property tax purposes, and you become exempt from all excess and special levies and possible regular levies, resulting in a reduction of your property taxes. Qualifications. Your annual household income should be less than $84,000. You own and occupy property as a principal residence for over six months per year and are over the age of sixty-one, disabled or a veteran with at least an eighty percent total VA disability rating. And one question that's been asked is, well, how does this affect the amount of revenue that we'd be receiving with levy lid lift? And the assessor, he said that he's working on that, and we'll be in touch with him to make sure that he is. Proposed uses. This is something that did get a bit refined from the last reading. So proposed uses for this levy lid lift would be to add four patrol officers, which would cost $860,000 on average. On average, a patrol officer with training and equipment and salary and benefits is about $215,000 a year. We retain two patrol officers, so that'd be 430. We'd retain a limited-term ARPA-funded patrol officers, which are two, so again, another 430,000. We'd retain limited-term ARPA-funded crisis response specialists for 135,000. We'd add a code enforcement officer to the one that we already have for 140,000. We retain a limited-term crime analyst, make that position permanent, 120,000. We'd include some capital safety, capital needs, referring to vehicles. So we did want to take the emphasis off of, I think last time we had that at 600,000. But really, we want to focus on operations and personnel, so we reduce that to 200,000 and referring to it as vehicles to help replace police vehicles when they come up for replacement. With greater law enforcement presence, we'll have increased jail costs, so $300,000 for score. And there's also more work for the court staff, so maybe a position or two there for 200,000. So the total would be about $2.815 million. So to raise that amount of money, now, as I've said before, it's not, it's more of an art than a science. So it depends on assessed value. But if we look at the 2023 property tax levy, then, which was for 5.5 million, and the rate was about ninety cents. A dollar thirty-five would have increased the levy up to a little over 8.3 million. The increase would be 2.769 million dollars. And a rate of a dollar forty would increase the levy to 8.665 million dollars for an increase of about three million. So this is the history to provide a little context of property tax rates in the city, going back a decade. In 2015, assessed value, though, now that middle column is in thousands, so that's not 2.6 million dollars, it's 2.6 billion dollars. And the rate was actually a dollar sixty-five, two fifty-three. And you can see through time, the assessed value increased greatly over, it, it increased more than twice. It more than doubled, that's what I'm trying to say. So in 2024, it was over 6.3 billion, and the rate was actually officially about eighty, little over eighty-nine cents per thousand of assessed value. I have, this is, gets scheduled, but I thought it was good to show it visually in a graph. So over the last decade, this is the assessed value for the city of Des Moines. So you can see there, it's, in 2015, it's less than three million, but it's rising at a pretty good slope up through 2023, where it kind of levels off and dips just a little bit into 2024, where it's over six million. So again, it more than doubled. But during that same time, this is what the city's collected as far as their levy amounts. You can see that it's relatively stable, and that's a function of that one percent limit. So as assessed values are greatly increasing, the amount the city's collecting is pretty stable and constant. So the result of that is really the inverse of the assessed value graph. So you can see that in 2015, it's up at a dollar sixty-five. And as that assessed value increases, we collect the same amount of money, essentially. That rate just drops, and in 2023, it drops all the way down to eighty-five cents per thousand, and then ticks up a little bit in 2024 to the eighty-nine cents. As far as comparison to other cities in King County, this is data from the King County Assessor's website. Thirty-eight cities in King County, our eighty-nine, four one four, the eighty-nine, yeah, eighty-nine cents, puts us fourteenth in the county. C-TAC is first with a $2.21. And then you can see Tuck Willa at a dollar eighty-nine, Snoqualmie, Normandy Park, Black Diamond. So if we were to, if the rate was a dollar forty and everything else stays the same, we'd go from fourteenth to sixth. I don't, having had conversations with a few other, more than a few other finance directors, I'd be surprised if those rates for other cities stayed the same, because we're all in the same economic climate, economic climate, and have the same strategies. Okay, as far as a property tax bill, this is a sample property tax bill for a resident in the city of Des Moines. And when you pay your property taxes, you pay property tax to a variety of taxing districts, depending on the specific location of your property. So this sample bill shows that the school district gets 35.17 percent of the property tax. State schools get 21.65 percent. So that's over fifty percent of a property tax bill goes straight to the schools. Fire district is at 14.92 percent. King County, 11.5 percent. And then City of Des Moines is that orange slice, the arrow is pointing to, 7.69 percent. You can see the rate there for 2024 is the eighty-nine, four one four, so a little over eighty-nine cents per thousand of assessed value. So the question would be, what would that look like if City of Des Moines was a dollar forty? So keeping everything else the same, what would that look like? And so the city of Des Moines would move up from the fifth largest section of the property tax pie up to the fourth. And it would be a dollar, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, a dollar forty and 11.54 percent of the tax, of the tax bill. And overall taxes, if they're the same, it just goes up fifty cents from 11.63 up to 12.13. So it's a little slice, it gets a little bigger, but still, you got fifty percent going to schools, 14.3 the fire district, et cetera. Impact to the property taxpayer, comparing the current rate to a dollar forty rate and property values. Again, a property value of 400,000, a dollar forty per thousand would increase the property tax bill 202 dollars. A million-dollar house currently paying 894 dollars would pay 1400 dollars, which would be 506 dollar increase for the year. And if your property was worth 1.015. And if your property was worth 1.6 million, you'd have an $809 annual increase. And the median property value in the city of Des Moines is about $521,000. Okay, along with placing a ballot measure on the, on the ballot for an election, the city would need to form pro and con committees. Pro and con committees consist of up to three members. Must be appointed no later than the resolution filing deadline, which for the August primary election would be May 3rd. And appointments could be made on April 25th at the council meeting on that day. Must be individuals who are known to favor or oppose the ballot measure. And if no appointment is made, the county auditor shall, whenever possible, make the appointments. So taxing districts do all they can to do that themselves, because it's much better than having somebody else do that for you. Elections. So this is something that's come up since the first reading. The August primary election is August 6th. Filing deadline, as I said, is May 3rd. Then we're going to talk about the November election. November general election is the 5th. The filing deadline is August 6th, which is the same as the primary election. And the reason that we're talking about November is the idea has been floated, well, if it fails in August, can we put enabling language or something that means we can put it on November and try again? But what the city would have to do if the council wanted to do something like that to kind of safeguard it not passing in August, would have, they would, it'd have to be authorized with a second ordinance, which can include language to pull the ballot measure if the measure passes in August. The issue would be, if the election's on August 6th, and the filing deadline is the same day, we're not going to know how, if that passed or not on August 6th. So we could file a separate ordinance that by the deadline and then have language that we can pull it. And also, it could avoid a challenge of violating the single-subject rule, which is just having one subject on the ballot measure. It wouldn't likely to be a successful challenge, but it's nice to avoid any legal challenges when possible. So that's why we're mentioning here the November general election as well, if the council was interested in just, I don't know, playing it safe and having it in November also, if it didn't fail in August.
Yes.
Can we, can we talk about that real quick? Because we're going to, essentially, this has been raised a number of times from people that have been involved with previous levy lid lifts and said, you know, there's a good strategy to have it set up for multiple elections if it doesn't pass on the first one. But because of the timing, we would need to do, essentially, what we need to know from the council is, is there interest in preparing a second ordinance that we would, we could then adopt well before this filing deadline for November? Essentially, we could adopt them both on the same night. It's identical, it would be identical levy lid lift for identical purposes. And so I guess that's a question that we would like to have answered tonight, whether the council wants to discuss it now or when we get into discussion later.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Along with that, we also, our council has reviewed the ballot language, which has been revised, and so we just wanted to put it up on the slides here to show the changes. So the original here contains 11 words, however, it must be 10 or less. So the original was, "The city council has adopted ordinance 24-020 concerning providing adequate funding for existing and increased continual public safety services. The bold and underlined words do not count." It was revised to, "The city council has adopted ordinance 24-020 concerning providing funding to maintain and increase public safety services," which is nine words, and that fits within the word limit restriction. The other ones, next one's a little bit wordier. So if approved, this is the original, "If approved, this proposition would authorize the city council to increase the 2025 regular property tax levy rate to not more than $1.40 per thousand dollars of assessed value for the purpose of maintaining and increasing existing funding public safety service levels, including retaining existing police officer positions and increasing public safety and police staffing desired by the community. All is described in the ordinance. Subsequent levy limits would be based on the 2025 maximum allowable levy. Qualifying seniors, veterans, and others would be exempt per chapter 84.36 RCW." So that's 80 words, and it's supposed to be 75 or less. Bold and underlined words do not count. Having read that, I'm not surprised that this got edited and cleaned up. So if approved, this proposition would authorize the city to increase the 2025 regular property tax levy rate to not more than $1.40 per thousand dollars of assessed value to maintain and increase funding for public safety service levels, including retaining police officer positions and increasing public safety and police staffing. All is described in the ordinance. Subsequent levy limits would be based on the 2025 maximum allowable levy. Qualifying seniors, veterans, and others would be exempt per chapter 84.36 RCW, comes in at 72 words and was a lot smoother to read. Okay, another topic that's come up with questions from the community is concerning the 2023 bonds. Questions about, well, why can't we just use that money to fund the government? Maybe we can delay payments, so we're going to go through that for a bit. The 2023 bond issuance had no effect on residents' taxes. The general fund does not contribute to the 2023 bond payments. Bonds were issued to finance capital projects. Under federal tax law, the bond proceeds must be spent on capital projects, the useful life of which exceeds the life of the bonds. Under state law, bonds can only be issued for projects identified in the authorizing ordinance. So basically, if we were to get investors' money to come into the city and then say, well, it's for, you know, the Marina steps, well, actually, no, it's for police, we're going to do something different, that's pretty much against the law. Postponing bond projects or deferring payments would cost the city additional interest and possibly damage the city's bond rating and future debt issuance prospects. So again, can we just not pay our bond payment for a while? That'd be a bad idea to want to try to refinance your bond payments before you've made your first payment. That would be bad for our bond rating. It would be bad for, when investors would look at us in the future. Also, there's spend-down rules for tax-exempt bonds. So as far as spending the money, there's targets during the first three years that would have tax consequences for us, or at least in regards to the interest that we would earn if we did not hit that or we'd delay payments. Levy lid lift proceeds should not be used to repay bonds. And if that were the case, this is kind of the flip of the issue of, with the bond money, well, can we make bond payments with property tax money? That would make the levy lid lift temporary, limited, and it would expire in nine years. So you would be risking the permanence of your levy lid lift if you were to do that. So that's why we're not planning to do that. Bond payments. So this is the bonds that the city has, this is how they're paid back. So the 2018 new money bonds, that was for the North Bulkhead, the general fund pays $226,600 this year and next year. And then the 2018 refunding bonds, payment source for the Marina is a little over 472, around 470,000 a year. REIT 2 also is a source for repayment, and combined that's 650,603 this year. And in 2025, it's a little bit less, 649,000. So those, the refunding bonds, refinanced some bonds from 2008 that were used for transportation projects and some Marina redevelopment. And then below is the 2023 bonds that were issued last year. And in 2024, in 2025, columns there, you see the payment sources are the Marina for the dock replacement, and you have REIT 1, REIT 2, so real estate excise tax is a revenue source for that. Paid parking, when that's operational, which is going to be soon on the waterfront zone, that's about 250,000. And then also, just a little bit of one-time tax. So the payment in 2024 is 1.38 million, and drops down a little bit the next year at 1.24 million. So again, the bond funds are not being paid by the general fund. And that brings us to the recommendation of a permanent levy lid lift, single year, levy rate of $1.40 per thousand. And looking at the August election, of course, we discussed the election matter between August and then possibly November. And then the motion to pass it to the next meeting for a third and final reading on April 25th.
Any questions before the motion?
Question. Tim, I'm going to ask you this. So the recommendation to add another ordinance for November, just to put it in our wheelhouse, right? There's no, we don't have to pass that when we visit on the 25th, if we deemed it's not necessary or we don't want to do it. But it's a good idea to have it because of the timelines you mentioned. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess if there's a concern that it wouldn't pass, and, you know, there was a major concern about what the implications of that would be, then you would like to have another bite at the apple, which would be November. But if we didn't pass the ordinance before the election in August, we wouldn't have that option, because we'd be past the filing deadline.
Okay, so, so as you suggested, preparing an additional ordinance for the 25th gives us that option to consider between now and the 25th.
Yeah, and we could pass it, I mean, we could pass it anytime before August 1st.
Yes, but it seems like it's recommended that if we're going to evaluate this and think about it, it might be best to do them both at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. If we were to make the recommendation to staff to prepare the second ordinance, that's not a commitment by anybody up here to vote for it whenever it comes up for a vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? I have a question. So by moving to adopt the amendment and pass it to a final reading, if you're talking about the draft ordinance, are we, are you going to come back on the April 25th with, with an amended draft ordinance that includes the second ordinance? Are you asking for direction to do that? So that on April 25th, we've got a combined draft ordinance for two ordinances?
It would be, so this motion and that motion is actually not correct up there.
Okay.
So if you could look at the, your packet.
Okay.
So the motion tonight would be to adopt the amendments. The amendments are what's in the, in the ordinance that you already received. We made some changes from the first reading to the second reading.
All right.
And pass it to a final reading. So that's just strictly on the August levy lid lift ordinance. What I'm hearing tonight from council is that you would like us to at least put together a second draft ordinance for the council to look at on the 25th that would authorize another levy lid lift, the exact same levy lid lift in November.
Understood, now I understand. Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Well, not necessarily. I thought we were just doing questions on this particular thing, and then we would have the discussion in the discussion time. Are we discussing the?
I needed clarity on whether we were going to further amend ordinance number 24-020 or they were going to create a new one. So now I know that they're going to create a new one. That's a different topic, and now I just got my clarity on this particular one.
Okay.
Okay? Do you have another question?
No.
Okay. Anything else before the motion? Motion, councilmember Nutting.
So clarification, this is not the correct motion for tonight.
Do you have it in your packet?
I move to adopt the amended amendments to draft ordinance number 24-020 and pass it to a final reading on April 25th for further city council consideration.
Second by Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. All right, any discussion? We've got seven minutes. Councilmember Harris, councilmember Mahoney.
I want to thank Jeff for, this presentation was really good, but I would not favor in any way, shape, or form adding that second bite of the apple in November. I know, I'm just, I just want to make sure. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I think, I think moving this to the next reading, all of us have our reasoning and thoughts and so forth we want to share with the public, and I'm just going to hold those till then, the 25th. But I'm going to support this move.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Very quick, really like the amendments. I think you're, you're hearing, and I appreciate that very, very much. And so I would support this.
Anything else? All right, take it to a vote, all in favor. Looks like we have unanimous, 7-0. Thank you. All right. So this, in accordance with our earlier decision, this concludes our meeting for this evening. The next meeting date will be April 25th, 2024. It will be a regular city council business meeting. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. And councilmember Nutting, would you like to move to adjourn?
Thank you, mayor. I move to adjourn.
Second.
I'll give the second to councilmember Mahoney. All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous.